Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all here tonight. We're going to go ahead and get the meeting started. This is Monday, December 16, 2024. This is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting. It is 5:00 PM. If I could have everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation in America, indivisible, infinite.
At this time in the agenda, we take a moment of silence for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, thank you again for everybody for being here. Come on in and find a seat. There's some up front and on this side if you need to find a seat. All right, there's one modification on the agenda. Our request items A and A B involving the airport, general aviation terminal. Well, we're going to leave it at 8A. There's a modification unless you want to move this up, but it's already at 8A, which is about the earliest it can be following public comment. I didn't know where we could actually move it to, but there was a request to try and move it as a representative was in out of town. I just, I don't know where we can move it to. It's already at 8A, so I think we're, we don't have many options. Ahead of consent? I don't know that we've done that. Okay, all right. Apologies, but we're going to go ahead and leave the agenda as it is. A few announcements. County offices will be closed Tuesday, December 24, and Wednesday, December 25 for Christmas holiday, and Wednesday, January 1 for New Year's. We also ask our residents to visit flaglercounty.gov to view our transparency dashboards. If you have any desire to be on the Citizens Advisory Board, we have all of them listed and which ones have open positions. The positions are open until filled. You can also view capital projects to see project status, funding, and schedules. Also, a drainage maintenance portal to view the current schedule of drainage maintenance. Upcoming commission meetings. The next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, January 13 at 5:00 PM. That's the only meeting in January for the commission. Our first recognition this evening is for the 2025 Florida Association of Counties photo contest honorees, and our communications manager Karen Callahan will present this item. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Chair Dan's Karen Callahan, communications manager. Josh? We have a fun item this evening. So our, we have a very talented community here in Flagler County. So every year, the Florida Association of Counties participates in a calendar contest. So all 67 counties in Florida are encouraged, folks of the community are encouraged to submit photos. Our communications coordinator Julie Murphy was collecting for Flagler County, so she did a call out to the press, and we got a lot, we got over 80 submissions, close to, actually over 100, but we were able to submit over 80 submissions to them, which is amazing because they received out of all 67 counties, 560, 560 submissions. So a lot of them came from Flagler County. So this year, Shannon Fountain, who's not here, she's actually, she was rear-ended earlier today, but she actually has one of the photos in the contest. It's going to be on, for May 2025, so we're real proud of her. That was an aerial photo she took with a drone and then enhanced it. And then also, we have talent within our own county offices because we have Daniel Simon, who also isn't here today, but he's one of our GIS technicians. Oh, he is? Oh, Dan! Dan, come on over. Come on over. We were looking for you. So Dan has this striking photo. You see what I did here? So they, listen, we had so many good photos that came to them, they decided to use that for an additional recognition. What is this, Dan? Striking, it's at the boardwalk of Wicklins Park. Yeah, Wicklin Park. So his photo, although it was not chosen for the calendar, it was selected by the FAC for Inclusion in their gift packages for commissioners during Legislative Day in March, so congratulations. With your permission, commissioners, can he come up for a photograph with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. You can walk behind. Go, either way.
Put him in the middle.
In the center.
Right in the middle.
Hold this thing up or?
Yeah, let's see it. Open it up.
There we go.
Not in your face.
Okay, is everybody ready? That's a good picture. It's great. We've got the screen down here in the bottom.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Great picture. Thank you. All right, our next item is community outreach. This is a 30-minute time period that's been allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or item not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct comments to the chair. I have a brief comment in anticipation of our meeting today, only due to some social media commentary, so if you'll give me before we start the clock on the 30 minutes, just wanted to breathe this into the record. And this is in anticipation of some public comments for RAGA Surf. So Flagler County and the town of Marineland jointly purchased the River to Sea Preserve with grant funding from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Like all grants, there are many conditions imposed on the town and the county. If we violate the grant agreement, the ultimate sanction will be to lose ownership of the preserve to the DEP. We allow RAGA Surf to use the preserve on a temporary basis until the end of the calendar year after RAGA was abruptly evicted from nearby privately owned lands. Meanwhile, the county began working on an RFP so that RAGA and any other business could compete to be concessionaire at the preserve. We do not question the value of RAGA as an asset to the community and good steward of the preserve. However, when DEP learned of the presence of RAGA on the preserve, DEP instructed the town and county to immediately remove RAGA from the premises. The county, at that point, had no choice but to provide RAGA with the 30-day notice that the temporary license would expire at the end of the calendar year. We will work with Marineland and DEP to hopefully allow for a concessionaire at the preserve. And I just wanted to clarify that in anticipation of some comments so that we can keep focus. We have a 30-minute time period at the beginning of the meeting, so what I'll ask when we start public comment is to line up so that we can easily transition from speaker to speaker. You'll have up to three minutes, but if you keep them concise and don't repeat too many times, we'll get more people to be able to public speak within the 30 minutes. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Again, it's any item on the consent agenda or not on the agenda.
Good evening.
State your name, thank you.
Yes, my name is Susan McGuire. I live in Bulow Villages. We've been here before with issues that have to do with our community, and I just wanted to read a brief letter that I wrote to you. Thank you for allowing our community the ability to vent our frustrations over the deteriorating environment at Bulow. Equity Lifestyles offers no equity and frustratingly degrading lifestyle. While it is apparent that many of the difficulties we are facing fall outside the immediate purview of county government, we still, as neighbors, constituents, implore you to act in one very strong way. The function of government, local, county, state, and federal is to safeguard and support basic life and safety issues. It's clear that tackling the many shortcomings of oversight demonstrated by this corporate giant is a behemoth of projects that may outlive all of us, but human decency demands that we try to address what we can. In the light of that, we implore you both individually and as a board to reach out to our state representatives, federal representatives, seek their review and wisdom to find a path of legislative reform. We ask that you send an email, write a letter, make a phone call to our state representatives and ask them to address the shortcomings in particularly 723, which on the surface seems to support both the landowner and those renting, but actually gives the DBPR no ability to enforce it. Your concern in action is imperative to bring sanity in action to our plate with our most sincere expression of gratitude. May the spirit of Christmas bring joy to you and your families, and may the spirit of the season compel you into making that call, sending that letter, or email. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next speaker, please. State your name.
Hi, my name's Lisa Hawken, and I live about two minutes from Marineland.
Speak a little closer to the mic for us. There you go.
Lisa Hawken, and I live about two minutes from Marineland. I'm not a public speaker. RAGA Surf Cafe and their subsidiary organizations have built a bridge that brings community together and a place for us all to sit at the same table. That is a gift without a price tag. In a very short time, RAGA has reached iconic status in this community across the country and around the world. We are all, as a community, are very busy trying to make a living, taking care of our families and doing the right thing. We are not all experts on politics, government, and policies. We rely on the people we vote into office to protect our interests and hear our voices. Sometimes the messaging they give us is very confusing and hard to understand. It is not without sacrifice that we are all here today, and there are many more that could not be here to support a small business that does not have the resources to be able to fight a battle against Goliath while trying to understand the ins and outs of three branches of government. I am a nobody in this community while also being a somebody. I am a little person, but it's the little people that matter. It is the little people that create community and make it bigger and better, not just bigger. While my group of people cannot be here today, my group of people is large, but not large enough. I urge the legislators to suspend termination of the current situation at hand and all work together with 100% transparency. Together, I am hopeful that our voices will be heard and a resolution to allow RAGA Surf Cafe to continue spreading their joy, community, and well-being will be reached swiftly. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Parody. I would just like to address some of the concerns concerning Bulow Plantation. They are owned by ELS, which you all know, the biggest shareholder is Blackrock. They take all our money, they do nothing for us, and in turn, give it to their investors. There are many things I'd like to address, but most of them are the, where they're not taking care of us, the handicap and the elderly. It's elderly abuse personally is what I think. Couple of years ago, for instance, in front of the mailboxes, we have curb stones, and I was right there when an elderly person tripped over the curbstone and broke his shoulder. We asked that something be done about that because it's very dangerous because the parking is right in front of the mailboxes where everybody goes to pick up their mail. What they did was they took PVC pipe and filled it with cement. So the first person to touch it just snapped right in half. They never, that was a couple of years ago. It's still the same. Now there's poles missing, and there's also curb stones missing. We have a, we have a place we call the island, which is where we have functions. There are handicap people. It's not handicap accessible for them. I would just like to say that I have been there for eight years, and it was like paradise to me. It was, I said I was never leaving, and it was paradise. Now, about three weeks ago, the manager called me and told me that she was evicting me, and I said, "For what?" And I feel like it's because I had a Trump flag hanging on my house. Now, right in the prospectus, it says we can't have yard signs, but we can have signs in our house. That's why I hung, you know, and I have other people next to me that complain a lot. So she called with four things that were not in our prospectus, saying that she was going to kick, kick me out, and I haven't heard back. I think it was just a threat. But I, in closing, I would just like to say that something really needs to be done about how badly they're treating the elderly people in that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next speaker, please. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for providing this opportunity to us. My name is Richard Rick. I live in Bulow Plantation, which is owned by Equity Lifestyles Properties, Inc. I've been running around on the internet lately, looking at comments and stuff related to ELS all throughout the country, all throughout the state of Florida. Most of these places have exactly the same problems: poor maintenance, unsafe conditions, drainage problems, street repair issues. They don't know who owns the trees and who doesn't own the trees. If you want to cut a tree down, you got to ask permission, but in our prospectus, prospectus says that they own the trees. You can't get them to come in and trim the tree. The trees fall over. This last hurricane, there was a lot of damage where we live because of tree problems. We have people here tonight that are afraid to go to their office and talk to them because of the way they have been treated. Some of you remember me maybe from last time I was here. I said exactly the same thing. They haven't gotten any better. They have taken out a few trees that needed to be taken out, or, of course, they were laying underground in people's houses. But they do not provide any kind of a trimming service. Their maintenance service is almost nonexistent. They have to require three bids for any job that they do, which is pretty much standard practice. But nobody wants to bid to come do maintenance in there. They cannot get people to come in there and do stuff. If you put something on the agenda for them to do, write up a complaint, which I did in January, for a tree that was cracking in half and going to fall onto my house or my dock, and it hit my dock, and then they cut the other half down before it hit my house. Four months later, boom, tree falls right down in my yard, knocks out the end of my dock, the tree that they're responsible for. When I talk to them about it, I get them to come, they cut the tree, what's left of it? Don't care about the dock, turn it into your insurance. Why should my insurance company, who I had come to my house, say to, and they said to me, "Well, it was their tree, they're responsible." So my insurance isn't going to cover it. A Bulow doesn't want to cover it, or ELS doesn't want to cover it because they're not so sure they're responsible for the trees, but it is in the prospectus. One prospectus says trees, three prospectus say nothing about the trees. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Sam Magic, president of the Bulow Homeowners Association. I've been here before. I believe I presented a, had a petition we sent to you as well. My, there's other people that may or may not speak tonight, but I know that, it's my understanding that the commissioners really have no jurisdiction regarding our inoperable gates, our water service problems, which we brought up before, tree removal issues that Rick, Rick's just brought up. We had an air, our home, our, we had no air conditioning in our clubhouse room over two years, and there's other issues too, but, so that being said, I'm assuming that's an accurate statement. I would like to make a request on behalf of the target community and the board if you would be able to contact the Flagler County Building Department because there are three homes that are abandoned and have issues. Now, you already know that you've already, they've already done work with the RV, joining RV park, but I really would appreciate if you could reach out to the building department. And as Susan McGuire just mentioned, we've already tried to contact State Center Hudson and Paul Renner, our rep. We've really got, starting in 2022 in September, we really have got no response from them. So like Susan just said, if you could reach out to them, we would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Powell, Jr. I'm one of the owners of RAGA Surf Cafe. Thanks for the opportunity, Chairman Danz and commissioners. I'd like to start with a thank you to the commission. In August, in the middle of August, I was on my way out of the country, and I'm in the operations of the cafe. I'm there every day. I was celebrating my youngest son defeated cancer, and we were on a Make-A-Wish trip when we got a two-weeks notice to get off of where we had a lease. And thank you. You guys came to our aid, and you gave us an opportunity to stay in business. You heard our cry for help and made a way to save our business, which provides over 30 jobs, and you helped us preserve what has become a tourist destination in Flagler County and a sacred place of peace for many. I'm here tonight just to ask you to come through for this community of people again. In the holiday season, it is near impossible to relocate and keep our people employed beyond December 31st. I'm asking to please delay. Can you, can we communicate with FCT and ask for an extension of the land use agreement to give us time to figure out a long-term solution? We have the support of stakeholders in Marineland, including Marineland Dolphin Adventures, who have letters from the Whitney Labs, UF, Marineland Wright Whale Project, Flagler Turtle Patrol, as well as a large amount of Flagler County residents and public support. That's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ron Quinn. I've traveled over here from Ocala, Marion County. We have property here. I have emailed all the commission. I appreciate the responses I've gotten back to help I appreciate the responses I've gotten back to help inform me, but I'm here in support of Ragga. It's a special, special place to our family. In the community, I'm hoping I can put a face to that, as it was said earlier. I've stood in line with the people that have come from thousands of miles to Flagler County to go see Ragga. Through learning the whole thing that's been happening, the one thing that I've come across and just really fell into is that Ragga defines river to sea, Rocker defines Flagler County, and we need to figure out how to get to the FCT, it appears, and the FDEP. I believe that y'all want this to work, I can see it, I saw it in the emails, I believe it. I guess as a business owner from Marion County that really pushes to get things done, that's why I took my time to drive over here today. We had someone sick in the office and I was like, oh, we got one less, I'm driving over to Palm Coast today. The wife's not letting me drive back tonight, so I'm gonna be late tomorrow, so I gotta stay at our place here. And with that, I just implore and ask that we find a way to get Ms. Melanie on the phone from the FDEP, I've seen her name as one, I think that's our contact, to be able to just talk to her and let her know that Ragga defines what we're trying to do at River to Sea. I mean, River to Sea is all about being natural Florida, we love it. I talked, someone on Gator Country today had made a comment about, I can't believe there's still a stretch of land on A1A that's not developed in the way that that area is, it's special. And I think we need to keep it that way, and I think Ragga defines that. They're just, they're a small business, but they're a huge business. A huge business that like, it literally has touched the world in three years. And with that special thing that's happening, I just hate for us to see that go away. And I, I know it's the Christmas season and that's why I think I said in a couple of my emails when I was in response to some of you, that's one of my fears is, is that we're down to less than two weeks and we just heard the 23rd, I mean, 24th and 25th we're off and New Year's Eve, we're off. Totally understandable, but that means we're running out of time. And I just, I really hope that y'all will find a way to get FDEP on the phone, I'll talk about it. I know they'll talk about it. And just let's get this thing fixed so we can keep, build River to Sea, build Rocker, build both, but keep, keep us natural, keep us what we are and keep us what makes this county great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, my name is Lexi Taylor, I am the former clerk of the town of Marineland. I just wanted to come up and talk a little bit about, I was with the town of Marineland for the past three years. I know Commissioner Hanson, you sat at the table for those three years and probably longer than that. I just wanted to speak a little bit about, you know, my involvement with the Marineland market. Over the past year, we've been organizing the Marineland market with Ragga Surf Cafe. We've had over 100 vendors over the past, even a little bit less than a year that have been part of the community, all live locally, that is, a lot of their primary sources of income. I also wanted to talk a little bit about all of the organizations within the town that that benefited from the Whitney Lab Sea Turtle Hospital, Ripple Effect Eco Tours, Flagler County Turtle Patrol, the Marineland Right Whale Project, all of these that are based right within the town of Marineland as well. And then of course, the Marineland Marina, in which Flagler County has awarded several grants over the years in hundreds of thousands of dollars, as you guys might know. And all of these have brought in tons of local residents that may not have even known that Marineland even existed or was a town in the first place. I do also want to note that the town of Marineland and Flagler County have been in discussions with FCT for nearly a year. FCT did notify Flagler County that they hadn't filled out the annual reports in over 10 years. The town of Marineland has always been in compliance with those, but Flagler County had not filled out their end in over 10 years. County officials were also notified that this would make them ineligible for future FTC grants. So I do just want to note that in the record, that that has been talked about for around about a year. As Ragga Surf Cafe has been in the town of Marineland, they have improved the lands on the property they've been on. We've talked about this in meetings as well. And I know that they had plans to improve things like the boardwalk that's been closed for, what has it been, like two years now, just south of the property that they're currently on. So I know that there's so much, they have the manpower that I know Flagler County doesn't necessarily have, especially for things that are a little bit outside of the normal realm of Flagler County. For things like restoration and especially with the parks. So I do hope that this can be rectified between Flagler County, the town of Marineland, and FCT. As well, of course, I hope we can make this a Christmas blessing happen for these families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners and staff, I'm gonna read so I can stick to my, my.
You state your name.
My name is Catherine Eastman, I reside at 924 Windward Way, St. Augustine, Florida, but I work as the program manager for the Sea Turtle Research and Rehabilitation Program at the University of Florida Whitney Laboratory, which is 9505 North Ocean Shore Boulevard in the town of Marineland. In my former role, I was an environmental educator for the GTM NRR, the Guanatolomato Matanzas National Estuarin Research Reserve stationed at that south office in the town of Marineland. I have had the pleasure to be on the River to Sea property for the last, oh, 19 years, leading public tours, free beach walks and trail walks in that preserve. I love that preserve and I think this whole room here tonight loves that preserve. However, I come before you today to express my concerns regarding the county's non-compliance with the Florida Communities Trust Division of the DEP. I am a former employee of FDEP, we're not all bad. As you've heard this evening, there's considerable public support for continuing to have a concession like Ragga Cafe on the River to Sea Preserve property. And I fully support that sustainable environmentally sensitive means that Ragga operates under. While I understand the community's passion for this, I'd like to bring to your attention a related but potentially larger issue of incomplete communication. The spring, the Whitney Lab had a 5K trail run. Over 149 people passed the finish line. I did a visitor use survey and got a 42% response rate. Half of those people, it was the first time they'd ever been to their park. We all recognize this is a public park. We all that, that love our parks, our public lands and waters, recognize that they need to be maintained. I went through the proper course, I went to the town of Marineland, I went to the county and received approval for my run, our run. So you could imagine that I was concerned when FCT's letter dated November 6th showed that my event was one of the items that was non-compliant. I think it shows that there's a breakdown of communication between Flagler County and the Florida Communities Trust. And I don't have time to read the remaining here, but my recommendation for you all, because there's a lot of events from runs that have been going on for years and years, to weddings, to education outreach events that are taking place in the River to Sea, and we'd like to continue to do them, but we want to do so with the approval of Florida Communities Trust. Let's kick this one a little further down the line and get them on the phone and have a workshop about this.
Thank you.
My name is Courtney Whitaker and I wasn't planning to speak, but I moved by tonight. I'm here on behalf of Ragga and as I was listening to everyone, I was thinking of that moment in the Home Alone movie where the mom is like super frazzled in the airport and she wants to get home and she's roadblock, 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 and she says, "This is Christmas, the season of perpetual hope." And we laugh about it sometimes in our home raising adolescent daughters, like this is the season of hope. And I've been thinking, as I've been listening to everyone talk, and especially the first representative that spoke, we are just the people and we don't represent all three people involved in communicating and how, who said what and when. But Ragga is a really special place. And we come from Orlando, we bring people from Jacksonville, we bring people, we have a place in Cinnamon Beach. I tell everyone about it. Our teenage daughters are greeted by name, they want to come back with their friends. It is an incredible place of community, it's what you've already seen online, but I'm actually here living, breathing, saying, maybe, maybe like the others asked, if there's something that can be said or done or taken a little further down the track for this to get resolved. It would speak a giant message of hope into this community, like something so beautiful, we were able to figure out a solution instead of just a hard stop. And I think that would, that would be beautiful for Flagler County, the, the town of Marineland, the Ragga community, but the Ragga community at large, which is all of us here and, and everyone else online. So, thank you for your time, I echo what James said. Even though I'm just a patron, I, I, I think it's so wonderful that they've been able to be there because they're just a super bright spot in my little tiny family of four. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Since there's time, I'll come up. New England Transport.
You state your name, please.
Mary Antonelli.
Thank you.
New England Transplant. Where you, I'm not born and bred in New England, but living there, heritage protection of the environment is number one. I came to Palm Coast, live in Grand Haven. I think within two weeks, I was at Ragga Surf Cafe and anyone who knows me, my friends from all over the country know that place because I talk about it. It's that is my happy place in this area. The food, the people and their mission. And as the experts with the, and I don't, oh, I was just reading about the trails up in New England, so I can't remember, the Florida Trust here and the River to Sea here, this is exactly the perfect handshake with what you're trying to do. What you want to do is preserve and educate people, this is the perfect place. Their footprint is minute and they give back. So that's what everybody needs to consider when you talk to DEM. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Matt Lightfoot, I'm a recent resident of Palm Coast. I live over on the Hammock and Sea Colony neighborhood. My family and I actually moved here because of the community that Ragga Surf Cafe provides. I'm a combat veteran, I did a tour in Afghanistan, spent a lot of time away from my, my kids, my, my wife. And I've found that that is a place where I can come, I can enjoy a nice cup of coffee. My daughters love Peas and Cream, thecai bowls that they have. But it's a place that we can come and we can enjoy the community, we can enjoy just the peace of, of the waves, the, the environment. And I just want to come on behalf of, of this group because as I've gotten to know them over the course of the last two, three years, they have really built a family, right? A, a family within the community, which is incredible, you've seen the, the response on social media. But one of the things that I want to share with you today is that as a combat veteran personally, I find a great deal of peace there, to know that they are taking care of the land. And granted, they've been in this spot just for a very short period of time, but they've been at the other spot for a couple of years now, and they've always been great stewards. They've always been people who are taking care of the place that has been given them to operate. And all they want to do is continue, they want to continue to do that and grow the community. And I just think if, if you can find the opportunity to spare some time to give them a temporary, an extension of their temporary use agreement, I think that would be a, a great benefit to them, to the community and Flagler, Flagler County as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
Good evening Commissioners and welcome Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Carney and, and Chairman Dance, you got three ladies there, so. I am here.
Jane, you have to state your name.
Jane Jantieloud, I'm sorry. 22 and a half year resident. I am here on, not on this issue alone. I am here on, and I've sent emails out. I left a very nasty phone call for Al Hadid several weeks ago because he's done absolutely nothing with the contempt orders that were ordered by the judge. The last contempt order, I have it here, was issued on, and I think Judge France is doing his best and he must be scratching his head. He issued two orders of contempt, the last one, November 1st, giving the defendants 14 days to come up with the $250,000 they owe the county for over three years, where the county could start finding them and to turn over all the documents, because obviously this dump is a tax write-off for them, because they keep paying attorneys. Okay, over a month has expired. I checked the clerk's records today. Mr. Hadid has not even attempted to enforce the $1,000 a day lien, which would go in our favor effective November 14th. That's already $30,000, which is two-thirds of what we owe this attorney who has been involved in 95 pleadings. The most audacious email I got from Mr. Hadid was sent to me on my birthday, which was otherwise delightful, even though I don't like getting old. He says, "I'm sorry matters do not move." As you expected, three and a half years after an agreement's defaulted. I'm really expecting too much, you know? He says, "I explained this is private property" and as such enjoys the constitutional protection of due process of law. Well, I've worked for attorneys and I've litigated, you don't just hearsay due process. I asked him in a letter in December 16th, very politely, "Please quote me the federal and state statutes that give anyone who is in contempt of a voluntary agreement that's almost four years old, recorded and signed voluntarily, three years in arrears, where, what is the statute and please provide me case law." He has provided nothing and as of 3 o'clock today, hasn't even opposed the lien. He needs to be fired, he is costing the county a million. I have given him till December 19th to give me answers, he gave me the most nauseating answers yesterday. So I am going to file a motion for leave to intervene, maybe some people will join me. The judge can refuse me, but I'm gonna file as a plaintiff. I pay his salary and I'm paying for this nonsense.
Thank you Jane.
All 95 pleadings I've sent to you. Thank you for giving me the extra time, please fire him, he's a disaster, God bless you all and good luck.
All right, thank you everybody. The 30-minute time period has expired. We do have public comment at the end of the meeting as well. If you choose to stick around until the end, there'll be additional public comment, which will stay as long as you are here and want to speak at that point. We're gonna move on to the, to the next item on the agenda, which is consent, and at this time, we'll give people just a minute to leave. Thank you. If you are leaving, please drive safe on your way home. We usually do, I mean, but there's, I'll have, I'll have. Ms. Petito, before everybody left, we really didn't address the comments like we normally do, but did you have any comments on Bulow or the non-compliance comments?
The only thing that I would share is there were.
The only thing that I would share is there were a few misstatements of fact with regard to the annual report and our reporting that we do to the Florida Communities Trust. There's only one report we submitted. I'm not sure what report the town submits, but we do submit a report every year. Just last week, I confirmed with our new land manager, Eric Revelta. He confirmed with, I can't think of the lady's last name or first name. The lady that had sent the emails of non-compliance, Melanie, that all of our reports are in, that the state agency is severely understaffed, and they have not reviewed them. But they are not missing any reports from Flagler County at any of our FCT locations. And I thi, I think it was already mentioned about some of the activities, whether it's 5K fundraisers, or even the Marineland market that's held, had been held previously. All of those are in violation of FCT's agreement and would have to be worked out as we start moving forward. As far as I know, what's been expressed to me from FCT, there are only two non-compliance issues at River to Sea. One is related to the concrete building pads that were placed for the construction of cottages some 10 years ago. We had hoped to build those back, therefore they hadn't been removed. But we are now moving forward with relocation of gopher tortoises so that we can apply for a demolition permit to remove those, since the county is not moving forward with the cottages. The cottages previously had been approved by FCT, but because they're sitting dormant, they're asking for us to remove them. And like I said, it's been like that for probably at least 10 years or close to 10 years. And then the other non-compliance issue is the space, the temporary space that we have allowed Raga Surf to occupy. That FCT did not weigh in on that approval. They have, per the agreement, I believe it was up to 60 days to review it. Because of the timing, because it was somewhat of an emergency, we had provided a temporary use. So we actually extended it beyond what FCT had wanted. When FCT made us aware of that request, I believe it was on like November 15th or 16th, and they had called for immediate removal. We extended it for the term of our temporary use, which got him to the end of December. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I think the cottages, though, were only non-compliant after the recent grant was denied by the town.
Correct, correct. So that's probably within the last year.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And, Mr. Hadid, did you have any comments on?
On which, the Dixie Motel case?
Yeah, right.
The fines are self-executing. We, we don't have to file in order to have the fines. What we do need to do is prepare to attempt to get our reasonable attorney's fees and costs and the amount of the fines, however they've accrued, and get them into a judgment lien so that we have the opportunity to foreclose. The financial reporting that they provided in accordance with the court order shows they have no money. They don't have the ability to pay the $250,000 or, you know, anything else that we can see. So the only way for us is to accumulate funds in a lien that we can then levy, force a foreclosure, have the property sold, and use the proceeds as we determine.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anybody else have any questions?
Heidi, quickly, have you, I know you've reached out. Have you heard anything from Melissa? No, not Melissa, sorry.
Melanie.
Melanie. Is there any way of a meeting to take place before we take a quick break for Christmas?
I have not been provided with anything from Melanie. I did email her, I believe it was three or four times, asking for a meeting. She has not responded to the request for a meeting. I know that we've got something scheduled with the Town of Marineland. It's our hope that maybe they will participate in that meeting later this week, which is Thursday, night at 6 o'clock, I believe.
Is there anyone besides her that we can reach out to?
She is the only one that has contacted us. Naturally, I guess we could go above her and possibly reach out to her superiors, but I don't know if I would recommend that.
We'll see how it goes on Thursday, then.
Commissioner Richardson, did you have anything? Okay.
Ms. Petito, I don't know if you were copied on it, but there was an email, the Commissioners, I thought, all got from a, another member of the DEP this week, who said he was reaching out to see how he could bring everything into compliance. Wasn't there a meeting with him? Is his name Jason, or am I?
I don't recall that.
I don't recall. I never got copied on it if it's.
I'll forward it over. I had seen it, because I had seen, and then I'll, you know, I know we need to move forward so we could talk about 8A, so I'll save my comments. It's for Commissioner comments, so.
I think if I could, the, the only email that I got from anybody in a state agency was Scott Eastman, which is.
Scott, that's right, Scott Eastman.
With GTM NER. He happens to be a DEP employee, but he's in a different capacity. He currently works out of the GTM NER. He had reached out. He's the same gentleman who had started the introduction between Flagler County Administration and Mr. Jim Powell many months ago, so.
Yeah, I'll save mine for the Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, and if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and move on. 5B is, is board comments on consent agendas. This isn't where you pull it, but if you've got any comments on a consent item, now is the time to talk about it. Is there anything, Commissioner Hanson?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pancon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Carney?
No Chair.
Commissioner Richardson, okay, none for me. So at this time, I'll take a motion on consent.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Or if there's anybody to pull, does anybody have anything to pull?
No, sir.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Hanson.
I'll second it.
On consent.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Richardson. All right. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item 8A. This is consideration to approve the issuance of new debt for the Airport Fund 1401, S 2024A not to exceed $1.45 million, and S 2024B not to exceed $560,000. And this is being presented by our Airport Director Roy Seeger and John Brower, Financial Services Director.
Mr. Chair, John Brower, Financial Services. I have Jay Glover here from PFM. He's our financial advisor. He's the one that put out the RFP and, and the information to get the, the debt for the airport. And you want to step up and talk about the?
Thank you for your patience, sir.
No worries. Jay Glover, Chair, Commissioners Jay Glover from PFM Financial Advisors. We are the county's financial advisor when it comes to debt-related matters. As John mentioned, when this need arise for the airport, which my understanding is part of it is for a matching grant, and part of it is for construction of some T-hangers at the airport, we were asked to reach out and get quotes for potential lenders. We did that. We actually got five quotes from potential lenders. Regions Bank turned out to be the lowest quote provider. When we actually got the quotes, their tax-exempt interest rate was 4.15%. That's the A Series, and their taxable interest rate was 5.25%. In the subsequent weeks, preparing the documentation to come before you today, interest rates did improve somewhat. And just last week, we actually locked in, pending your approval today, an interest rate of 3.98% on the A tax-exempt loan and 5.13% on the B taxable loan. Both of the loans are prepayable without a penalty, starting February 1 of 2030. So after the first five years, you can prepay without a penalty, and they both have a final maturity of 2034. So they're 10 years in length and can be prepaid without penalty essentially halfway through that term. So I'm happy to address any questions you all might have. Again, Regions Bank is the lender. They use two different subsidiaries. That's why you see two different names, one for the tax-exempt loan and one for the taxable loan. That's just an internal issue with how they, you know, document these loans. But it's both with Regions Bank.
All right, thank you. Questions from the Commission?
I think you mentioned one point about the T-hangers, but this is for the terminal.
Yeah, I, they might clarify the, the actual projects. I know they're airport projects.
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Part of it, the taxable, is repaying the general fund for the T-hangers. And the other, the 1.4 million or so, is for.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify in case I misheard, but.
Yeah, I think, I think the county might have done some internal financing on the T-hangers and the taxable pieces actually to reimburse that internal financing.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry for the confusion.
That's okay, very good, thank you. All right, seeing nothing here, we'll open up for public comment. This time, if there's anybody from the public that has questions on this item, come up to the podium.
I wish I could say something positive tonight. Roy Seeger doesn't deserve a dime for anything he wants to do with that airport. An airport advisory board that was promised by Heidi Petito to Jerry Cameron needs to be formed of experienced local pilots, as was before, before any transfer of money is made. I am blessed that I do not live that, near that airport, where instead of renting out exclusively to FBO's fixed-paced operators as my husband requested in 2018, which will generate very good revenue and will substantiate the need for a terminal for the corporate jets who come in, do their repairs, don't use letted gas, and take off. What the flight schools are doing to people in Palm Coast is disgraceful. We still don't have radar. We wouldn't even have a light on the tower if my husband didn't convince the planning board years ago. Craig Coffey had that tower planned one foot below the requirement for a light or full Dixie. And we were infuriated, and the planning board agreed with us. And I can see that light by bathroom window, and we have no radar. I wouldn't give Roy Seeger's department a dime. I think a financial audit is needed of everything he expends. And I think an outside person should come in to do a study to see what is the best use of the airport. Maybe it is a flight school. I doubt it. I'm sure the FBOs that my husband suggested will bring the most revenue and will give a reason to have a terminal. You want a terminal for flight schools when you don't even know where these people are? Who they're coming from, they're coming from? Do they have visas? Are they another Mohammed Atta Group? We don't know. You don't know. I don't know. We need corporate jets coming in here and experienced people. We need an airport advisory board like we had before, before any transfers to the airport are made unless it's a dire emergency. And I really don't see this application having an emergency. The citizens in Flagler County have been shafted up the rear. And frankly, we're getting ready to move out of here. It's far worse than Dade County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Item 8A for consideration. Is there any other comments for staff?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms., Commissioner Carney?
I make a motion that we approve resolution of the Board of County Commissioner of Flagler County authorizing the loan from Regions Capital Advantage, Inc. in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1.5 million for the purchase purpose of providing financing for certain capital improvements to the Flagler County Airport as described herein, approving the form of the authorizing and the execution and delivery of the loan agreement, authorizing the execution and delivery of Flagler County, Florida, capital improvement revenue note, Series 2024A, to evidence the county's obligation under the loan agreement. Such Series 2024A note to be a limited obligation of the county, payable from the legally available non-ad valorem revenues, budgeted and appropriated, providing for the rights and securities of the owner on the Series Zero, sorry, 2024A note, making certain other covenants and agreements in connection therein, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Carney. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to modify that resolution.
Okay.
You only accounted for the 1.45 million. We still have $560,000. So the, it not to exceed would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 2 million.
Just to state the second part as well, if you want to amend your motion. Hasn't been seconded yet.
There's two loans.
Yeah, there's two.
There's two loans.
Yeah, there's, there's one resolution, but it approves both the Series 2024A loan, I think, and not to exceed $1.5 million, and the 2024B loan, which I think is not to exceed $560,000.
Yeah, $560,000.
I'll modify. I just didn't see the second resolution.
You can read the bold on the agenda item under 8A. Just the bold part would suffice.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's okay.
All right. I'll amend my motion to approve the issuance of new debt for the Airport Fund 1401 to, I'm sorry, S 2024A not to exceed 1450, 14, 1,450,000, and S 2024B not to exceed 560.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I ask that also approve the unanticipated revenue revolution, resolution, the budget transfer that accompanies that, and amend the FY 25 CIP as well.
Okay. So approve the unanticipated, starting at that, the third line from the bottom on the agenda? Approve the unanticipated revenue resolution, and approve the budget transfer, and approve the amended CIP. Is that what you want to add? Those three things?
Right, and the, but the, the resolution and the attachment A, which is the budget transfer, yeah. That's correct.
Okay.
The two resol, one resolution for the debt, one resolution for the unanticipated revenue and to open the fund, and then the unanticipated revenue budget transfer. The actual document needs approval. And then amend the, the CIP for FY 25 with the project.
Okay, so I'm going to go back just for clarification. We've, we've read into the record the, the bolded area for both loans. Right? If you're looking at the agenda. Under 8A, look at the, the summary of the agenda. So we've, we've read into the record the two loans. Now just be clear on the other parts of the agenda. What do you want read into the record for the motion?
Mr. Chair, just the last, it looks like last couple, or last sentence where it says, approve the unanticipated revenue.
Right.
Resolution, approve the budget transfer, and approve the amended CIP.
Have you got that, Kim?
Yes.
Okay. So you will need to, did you second Greg?
Yes, sir.
Can you withdraw?
Withdraw, my second.
Okay. And then just reread your motion, please, Ms. Carney.
Consideration to approve the issuance of new debt for the Airport Fund 1401, S 2024A not to exceed 1,450,000, and S 2024B not to exceed 560,000, and to approve.
And then.
And the unanticipated revenue resolution, approve the budget transfer, and approve the amended FY 2024-25 CIP.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Carney, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. At this, I did open this up for already public comment, so I'll bring it back to the Commission for a vote. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Item 8B, consideration of bid award 25-011P to Sour Construction LLC to construct the General Aviation Terminal Building and roundabout road tie-ins at the Flagler Executive Airport in the amount of $10,225,617. This is requested by, again, Roy Seeger, Airport Director, and now Robert Rounds, our purchasing manager.
Good evening, Commissioner Chair and Commissioners. My name is Roy Seeger, Director of the Flagler Executive Airport. As you read, Commissioner, tonight we have a consideration to approve the issuance to, I brought the wrong one, sorry.
Now, you want mine?
Okay, try it out again. So tonight, we're here for the consideration of bid award 25-011P to Sour Construction to build our new general aviation terminal facility. We are, we put this out back in September, and we actually received seven responses for this bid, which is really good. And another thing I was really happy about is that four of the bids came within $500,000 of each other. So that's less than 5%. So that's really good. So we were very happy. That means nothing was missed on that. They, they got it all. So, so our consultant, Hoyle Tanner, they actually did all the background, looking at, make sure, looking at references. They got all good references. Sour Construction also has a lot of good construction projects they have done that also that's aviation-related. So, again, the project is going to be to build a building, 9.6 million, and then also another 585,000 to build a roundabout. So we have the money to do everything we need to do. And another great thing about this thing is too, is that on this whole project, we're only paying about seven cents on the dollar, being that we have a $5 million from the state revenue and almost another, almost 5.1 million from FDOT.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have representative from Sour Construction here as well. His name is Eric, and he is a pre-constructor and director. So if you have any questions from him, be happy to call him up.
Great, thank you. See if there's any questions from the commission for Mr. Seeger or from the construction manager. All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the commission on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. So at this point, on 8B, I'll need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the bid award of 25-011P to Sour Construction LLC to construct the General Aviation Terminal Building and roundabout road tie-ins. Additionally, to approve the unanticipated December, unanticipated revenue resolution and approve the amended FY202425CIP.
Good catch. Thank you, sir.
I'll second the mo.
All right, okay. Motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Just verifying we've caught the requirements in the motion. All right, making sure. Clerk has it? Okay, very good. All right, so with no more questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Item 8D, quasi judicial. This is a request for approval of a final plot for Plantation Base Section 2. What?
8C.
Oh, C, thank you. Trying to get a little bit faster. Item 8C, consideration of acceptance. Jerry over here thought he was going to get done early tonight. Item 8C, consideration of acceptance of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's report of recommendations and consideration of approval of their recommendations. This is a list of 11 recommendations by the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We can accept all, some, or none. So at this point, we'll start the, the conversation. Welcome, sir, Joseph Hegidis, Health and Human Services Director and staff.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Joe Hegidis, as you said, Director for Health and Human Services. I am here today to.
Devri, can we have a?
Yes, I, I will introduce Devri Parodowski, who is our Housing Services Program Manager, and Valerie Kleimer is our Vice Chair, our, of our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
Awesome, thank you.
We are here this evening to share with you the Affordable Housing Committee's annual report, and along with that, request your consideration of 11 recommendations pertaining to affordable housing development and policies that we hope to receive your feedback on and determine whether or not we will be adopting all, some, or none of those policies as, as the Chair mentioned. We have some slides, and I'm hoping we can get set up for the presentation. If not, we can wing it.
Yeah.
It should be on the agenda drive.
No slides!
Apologies.
So as this comes up, how do you want to handle each, do you want to go through and have consensus on the one through 11 so that we can make a single vote on the ones that are approved to go through?
We defer to whatever is the pleasure of the Board, but absolutely, we will give kind of a brief overview, and then Devri will, will briefly read over the recommendations. And then, yes, if we want to go one by one, we can, or if we feel there's consensus among, you know, whatever the pleasure of the Board might be.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you for the slides. We'll move on to the next one, please. So again, the purpose of the presentation is to provide context about the committee's work and share finding, findings about our community's housing needs and present actionable strategies that they have recommended to both the county and the city of Palm Coast. Next slide, please. Oh, we've got the clicker here. Thank you. The, the committee, or AHAC as it's known, is joint, a joint committee created by Flagler County and the city of Palm Coast. Their goal is to review local policies and regulations and recommend strategies to encourage affordable housing in our community. This is a statutory requirement tied to the ship funding under Florida law. AHAC has reviewed several housing challenges and highlighted several for us here in their report. Many renters and homeowners in the community are what's known as cost burden, with a significant number spending more than 35% of their income on housing, 35% being the national standard for affordability thresholds. County's housing stock is aging, and there's a lack of relatively new affordable rental and multifamily developments, despite all of the single-family development going on in our community. Proposed strategies such as permitting accessory dwelling units, refining focus areas under the Live Local Act, streamlining development review processes for affordable housing, and establishing structured process for acquiring public lands for housing offer practical mechanisms to address these challenges. These approaches aim to enhance housing options while preserving neighborhood character and supporting strategic, community-aligned development opportunities. Move forward, staff request the Board and Council formally acknowledge the staff report, or the AHAC report, excuse me, and again, adopt all, some, or none of the recommendations. Adopted policies or implementation plans must be written into the Joint Local Housing Assistance Plan by May of 2025. A timeline for implementing adopted recommendations, for example, drafting an accessory dwelling unit ordinance by Q2 of 2025, should be presented to the committee by staff in the first quarter. So any implementation plans we have, we need to bring back to the committee in the first quarter. The AHAC will monitor implementation and provide feedback to ensure strategies are effective before final drafts come back to the Board for formal adoption. These recommendations are presented, again, to both the city of Palm Coast and the Board. With that, I'll, I'll ask Devri to jump in and cover briefly the 11 recommendations we have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Devri Parodowski, Housing Services Program Manager with Health and Human Services, and let's get to the recommendations that the committee made. And I am here with the Vice Chair of the Committee, Valerie Kleimer, so if you want to provide any insight onto any of these recommendations, please do. The first recommendation that they made was for that, for the county administrator, and by the way, these recommendations are also going to the city of Palm Coast as well. So that's why you'll see the language that says the city manager. But they want the city manager and the county administrator to formalize, formally look at these recommendations to designate staff to carry out the implementation of these recommendations.
Okay, so let's do one at a time. Let's get some questions if anybody has. Did you want to provide any feedback, Valerie? Right, we've talked about this, and just for record, I'm going to be leaving AHAC as the county commission representative. Commissioner Carney will be filling in for that role, but we've both been on the committee for the last year, at least a year and a half, at least. So we've got the advantage of some background information and discussion, but did you want to add anything, Valerie?
As a committee, we are there, and we meet, and we discuss things, and we bring recommendations. And typically, we don't know whatever happens and if anything is ever implemented. If we have a person that we can go to at the city and the county and say, hey, what's going on with these recommendations? Also, they could be a point person for anybody who's coming in who wants to build something based on the Live Local Act, because right now, there's no roadmap, and they don't even know where to start.
So I will just add the first, I think my first meeting there, we went basically the whole first year, and, and there wasn't any follow-up. So we, the very next year, because we do this annually, very next year, the staff was like, well, we're just presenting the same things we did the year before. So it was Mr. Nealan started, I think, was, was president when, when we got a more formalized process in place, and then it went to Sandra to where we really need to clarify. This is to clarify so that there's a proper accountability for the approvals of the things, and, and that staff is, comes back to AHAC.
Correct, because we can keep saying the same things over and over again. We need to know what works and what doesn't work, and what we need improvement on, and what's just not going to work in our county.
Okay. Any questions on that one? You don't have to say anything if you don't.
I have a lot of questions in my mind, but I want to hear your presentation so I can really stay focused. Thank you.
All right, so we'll go to two.
So the second recommendation was to develop an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, incorporating best practices.
So explain a little bit of the ADU concept.
Yes, certainly. So an accessory dwelling unit is, it's strongly encouraged under Florida statute to have an ordinance that would allow them. These are units that can be built inside a home to allow for a rental unit, can be external to the home or built onto the home, and these units are generally considered to be good for people to be able to maintain their homes, to be able to pay for them while they're retiring so that they can have maybe some tenants. But they also offer what's called naturally occurring affordable housing options for, for renters and other tenants.
And like aging in place for elderly relatives and family.
That one.
Okay.
Considering so much of the properties are single-family units, can you explain how that would work under that situation?
Yes, with communities that are single-family, primarily, accessory dwelling units offer more options within those units without changing the appearance or the character of the neighborhood. So if you have, say, a three-bedroom home, you have one bedroom that you want to cordone off inside the home and turn it into a full apartment unit, that would have to be allowed under your local code to do that so that you can rent it out or have somebody live in there. And so that's what that does. Instead of building other units or multifamily units, you allow some homeowners to build out a portion of their home.
I believe one of the definitions of single-family is one kitchen, and I don't think in the city of Palm Coast, they allow two kitchens in a home. Correct?
No, that's part of our challenge is that you actually can have a quasi-ADU. You just cannot have a separate kitchen. These ADUs also come in handy for family members that are aging, and they want to live with family, but they need some of their own autonomy. This is another way to help them to be able to stay close to family, but maybe not feel like a burden to their family because they've got their own space.
And we don't have to carve out all the details tonight, but, yeah.
I'm not trying to drill it down. I'm just trying to understand what they're talking about.
Yeah, because the whole ordinance has to be developed. Any other questions? Okay, number three.
So the, the third recommendation was to develop a housing cost impact statement on all county agenda items, and, and there is no restriction on this as to what type of item this would be other than something that would be a regulatory change. So the committee members discussed this during their public hearing, and they discussed the, the possibility of this being open-ended for the, the governing bodies to decide whether this should be something that is specific to housing ordinances or regulations. But they did discuss the possibility of this being kind of open-ended so that you could calculate the cost of housing.
He provided like, do you have an example of that? Where you've seen that, like what item that would, what type of?
Yes, so this would be similar to a business impact statement. So an example might be, I think Commissioner Dance had provided the example of a tree ordinance, but other types of ordinance would be more black and white, like an impact fee increase or the requirement of a certain building standard or code that might cost more to build. So those would, would be examples.
Leon, it's.
Yeah, I just thinking about it broadly.
Okay, so.
Become a reason for denial?
No, it is just, it's just a piece of information so that as we make decisions, is this decision going to impact increase or decrease the cost?
But is it going to end up being something used as a reason for denial on a, on a development by a board, by a future board? That's all. I'm just.
I don't think that's the intent. I think it just, it just, we're asking staff to be aware of the impact that these changes may make on the cost of housing in our area.
So if you, if you modify the inside of your house to have a three-bedroom into a two-bedroom, and you modify so that third bedroom, for instance, has a door to the outside, right, and does that affect the price of the house? Is that what we're saying? Does it go up?
There's more large-scale issues. So it could be a change in a, if there was a change in a zoning code, if there was an amend, a change to the land development code that affected countywide, is there, how does this, how would that change affect the average cost of housing?
So when we change the tree ordinance, for instance, and I can't verbatim remember what all the changes were, but let's say we, we required four shade trees instead of three shade trees.
That's a good example.
In a development, right?
If you up.
So if you up the cost of the number, or you up the number of shade trees, you're going to increase the cost to build that, that building or that home.
And it could be up or down, not necessarily up, but.
Well, how does that affect, or what does that have to do with the price of enchiladas? I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about affordable housing here. So what does that have to do with affordable housing?
If you make an ordinance where you make everybody put in an extra tree, and an extra tree costs $200, well, now that could put that home out of somebody being able to afford it. So that's why we're looking at this to try to help to keep things affordable and know kind of where things are, because right now, we have no idea when you add impact fees, do tree ordinances, there's no way for us to know how it's going to impact the cost of the home, and that's kind of what we're looking at, is how does that change that you all are making going to impact the price of that home to the consumer? going to impact the price of that home to the consumer?
So this becomes something that we're constantly chasing an updated, refreshed data set to plug in on ordinances, perhaps? Like we're constantly chasing down what needs to be updated, where this field would have to be updated. So I don't know that we would want to do that per se.
The way I saw it was when staff gives us their summary report with their agenda items, it could be something they add a simple sentence or two in their summary report.
We'll go ahead.
Okay, move on to number four.
So the fourth recommendation was to establish an inter-local housing finance exploration task force, or this could be a working group involving staff from housing planning, procurement, and finance to assess the potential revenue sources, like grants and bonds, as well as the financial procedures required to create a housing trust fund for affordable housing initiatives.
Okay, five.
So the fifth recommendation is relating to the developers being able to access Live Local Act. They wanted a hyperlink on the websites that explains the processes and incentives available under the act. And they also wanted them to be able to see the current guidelines and application procedures.
Question, Ms. Richardson?
I don't quite catch what we're trying to do with that, that section there, other than have some paperwork, right?
So they're looking for people to be able to find the information available on who do you apply for? For example, there is a tax exemption for affordable housing. Where do you go to get that? What are the processes? And so they wanted the developers and the builders to be able to find that information on the websites.
And they can't find it now? Because it's not designed. Thank you.
All right, number six.
And number six is to provide a hyperlink on the websites and on digital forms, letting the developers know about the technical review extreme options to get expedited site reviews, in the same process as for here in the county. It's already in place and it gives developers access to pre-submission feedback so that streamlines their process.
Okay, seven.
And number seven, the committee had recommended that that county adopt an ordinance implementing the Live Local Act. And they said in cooperation with local municipalities, but they were interested in having an alignment with what other municipalities may do. For example, the city of Palm Coast, when developing an ordinance for the Live Local Act.
I have a question for Mr. Hadid. Mr. Hadid, are you, out of the Live Local Act, are we required to adopt an ordinance to implement it?
I think it is required. We have to promulgate an administrative policy that has to be by ordinance.
I think in my discussions with Mr. Moyleton too, it proactively implements criteria so that we are not reacting.
Right, because we need to, got it. I understand that. Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, number eight.
The eighth recommendation was to establish a process to identify and inquire public lands for affordable housing. There is, and this is for the builders and developers, this is what that's referencing, not specifically for the county, although the county can do that at some point. There is a statute that does require counties and cities, and that's also been expanded under the Live Local Act, to identify surplus lands that they hold and to have their local governing bodies adopt them as being suitable for affordable housing every three years. The state does not define a process. It does not define how, what you do with those properties. And so the committee has recommended that the county and the city of Palm Coast define that process locally.
Mr. Chairman, we've done that, correct?
We do a process annually where Mr. Mangle's office will put together vacant county-owned lands that are suitable. But this goes a little bit farther in establishing a, explain it better for me, somebody.
Specifically, this is about how to get one. So let's say you're a nonprofit agency or you're a resident and we know that these properties exist and they are currently on the county website listed as being suitable for affordable housing. But what next? And I think that's what the committee is aiming for. What's the next step? Who do you contact? Is it an RFP process to acquire that property for that purpose?
All right, nine.
So the committee recommended that the comprehensive plan focus prioritize affordable housing for low to moderate income households.
You could probably do 10 and 11. They're all kind of similar.
Yes. Yeah, same thing for 10, that one, is they did want the priority for mixed-use development so that affordable housing can be near economic opportunity centers. And then that, so I'll stop there then, within the comprehensive plan.
Define prioritize affordable housing within the comprehensive plan?
To my understanding, they just wanted to make sure that there was that specific focus in the comprehensive plan. I do believe there are some updates that have been, at least on the county side, that do tend to have that focus currently for the housing element.
I think the intent is to, right, mixed, affordable housing is going to be better and infill instead of on the outskirts of services. So we're locating them and prioritizing where the services are available, more walkable areas and not out on the outskirts where there's nothing. And 11?
So lastly, the committee just wants the local building departments to identify sustainable design principles specific to affordable housing.
Which is a catch 22 because they're more expensive, but.
So it's maybe a challenge.
Right. Okay, so we've got 11 of these recommendations. Is there any that we need to pull that you believe are, need more further discussion?
I don't like three.
Three.
Yeah, I don't like three.
Three. Okay, so three is the impact statement. Just voice a little bit of your concerns and maybe give direction back. Maybe this isn't one we do this year, but give direction back to the committee so that they can work on it and bring it back next year.
Well, I don't think it's needed at all. I mean, if you want us to look into the fact if we raise impact fees, it's going to raise the cost of a house. If we increase the millage rate by point one, it's going to increase the impact, it's going to increase the price of a house. If you increase utility rates, it's going to impact the price of the house. I mean, it just seems obvious to me that, I don't know why we need to write a piece of paper that says anything you do is going to, to the builder or to the occupant of the house, it's going to increase the price of the house. I mean, it just seems obvious to me that, I mean, why develop an ordinance that says that?
Well, and if we're imposing things while we're approving a development, what if these, you know, increase, decrease are not available at the time of imposition? And then, you know, we're constantly chasing this increased or decreased number per unit based on this item and this item and this item. And then you're going to have boards that are coming up here and use it as a reason to decline. You know, I think it's got just all these tentacles that are difficult for our county staff and boards to keep chasing.
Anybody else with concerns on that one?
We did this so long ago, I can't, I can't remember where we actually got this recommendation. It came out of something that another city was doing, I believe. And it's also required for, if you're worried about or want to help the affordable housing, your staff should be looking at changes and how it impacts housing. I think that's the gist of how it got started, but.
And there's no harm in sending it back.
It's not every agenda item, it's not every project. It's just as we change things, I think that's what we're looking at more than anything else is, as we're making changes, are we looking at how it impacts housing? But it might be too broad to, it might be too broad, but we can rework it. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to make or break the affordable housing coming to Flagler County. You know what I mean? It's not like, oh, you know, thank God they implemented number three. They're going to build them now.
Well, I see three on consensus for not, for taking this one out. So is there, we will send three back to the committee. Is there any of the others that?
Well, the Live Local Act's a whole workshop in and to itself, so.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, yeah, so.
And I know Mr. Moyleton's been doing legwork on that already, so.
Yeah.
All right, so at this point, we would need a motion on all, on.
Mr. Chair?
One but three, yes.
There's one word in there that really does hit in my brain, something off, is the garage conversions. We live in Florida, we have nine to 10 months of heat, and then when it's cold, we need heating. So what kind of improvement has to be done to convert a garage into livable space? And then usually they're below level of the home. So when you're converting a garage, there's a lot of construction and cost to that. How does that make it affordable?
Well, you're looking at it, it's an ADU. It's an accessory dwelling unit to the house. And yes, you will have to make sure that the garage meets code with heat. Heat is required, AC is not, according to HUD. So it would have to have heat, but throughout the ADU process, you're going to have to get permits, you're going to have to have inspections. There are rules that are going to have to be followed. Right now, we're just trying to bring this to the forefront so we can try to help families, help people, you know? We know our teachers and our firefighters and our police officers and so many county, city, school board members need a place to live. And they need, even if they get a garage that has heat, probably will have AC too, because the AC unit can run ducts in the garage. And it meets the ADU requirements, now they may have something they can afford on their salaries.
And Commissioner Richardson, we'll develop an ordinance if we approve this and we can choose at that time to exclude garage conversions or build out a robust. So we'll, yeah. I know that Grand Reserve, I believe, has an ADU attached into their program. So it's, you know, it's like multi-generational, so.
And it's hard to do a garage. I looked into it to, not for this purpose, but just so I didn't sweat to death when I was working on my workshop. But you cannot take the housing, the house air conditioner and duck it into the garage. They will not let you do that. It's against code. So you have to put its own separate, you know, out there. Yep.
Yeah, they use wall units for most of them, yes.
Right, yep, can be done.
I've seen them. They're not legal, but I've seen them.
Oh, no, you can, there's legal ways to do it. It's very expensive.
All right, so we're in agreement, it appears, on one and two and then four through Or a motion can be made to eliminate three and approve the rest.
Mr. Chairman, I move.
But I'll take it after the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the recommendations, one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment on this item, if there's anybody that has comments on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee recommendations. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission and we'll call the question. Motion by Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Carney, right? Second? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Tell the committee thank you for their hard work. Valerie, you're president next year? The chair?
Haven't had a lot.
All right, next item. This is 8D quasi-judicial request for approval of a final plat for Plantation Bay, Section 2A through F, Unit 12A. This has this quasi-judicial, so it requires the disclosure of ex parte communications. Commissioner Hanson, do you have any?
I had none.
Commissioner Pankin?
None.
No.
Commissioner Carney? No. Commissioner Richardson? Says no. Okay, I did not have any. Floor is yours, Mr. Mangle.
Good evening, Commissioners. Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director. Do have a quick PowerPoint here. And so we've got, this item is the final plat for Section 2AF, Unit 12A in Plantation Bay. We had seen this before, some time ago, back in 2022. And so this is that approximate location off of Sterling Bridge. We've got the land use and zoning pieces that we normally show, PUD zoning for that designation of the area, mixed-use low, consistent with the DRI for the future land use. All zone X outside of a special flood hazard area. Soils were a mix of different soils, most of them, I think, falling in under that, let's see, where was that? Malabar fine sand, I think is what we end up having, the fines. And then also, anyway, we've got a mix of sands there. We did have some wetland areas that were pulled out, put into conservation as part of the development. And then that, this then leads to the wetland map that showed those isolated wetlands that were part of that area that were under the plat, under the development. And so this is that graphic now showing how that looks more or less at the beginning of the year. This shows the lot development happening with the plat superimposed from the property appraisers system. So you get an idea of how that layout sits. And then this is more specifically the plat sheets itself. And so this is eight-sheet plat, you had it within your packet. This is the cover. And then this is the key sheet that goes through and tells you where you can see within your packet each of the specific pages then depicting the lots themselves. 131 total lots. One item I wanted to note before I went into further into the PowerPoint, this did have in the staffer board on page three, an affordable housing impact statement. I've been sneaking these in with some regularity. And then this one consisted of, and I'll read it for the record so you can get an idea of what I've been doing. This final plat provides for construction of single-family dwellings on individual lots, but is not anticipated to impact affordable housing. This subdivision is not designated for affordable housing and not providing affordable housing in this location will not affect the provision of affordable housing elsewhere. And so that was the extent of how we addressed it here. We've done similar language before, of your consideration, and not on, on kind of the broader terms of what we're talking about with trees and impact fees, those kind of things. But wanted to have that included, had had that in your reports previously. We've got the access in Sterling Bridge, like I had mentioned, 131 lots, internal roadways, 50-foot right-of-way width. They're all private, they're all to be owned and maintained by the HOA. Stormwater is in designated tracks within the ownership and maintenance authority of Temoca CDD. Water and sewer utilities provided by FGUA. We do have performance bonds, we got two, one for setting lot corners and then one for some remaining sidewalks that are here. And then the maintenance bond that's been provided is for the entirety of the development. So in your approval, should you choose to approve the final plat, you'll be finding it consistent with all of the regulatory documents that we have that are guiding this development, including the preliminary. development, including the preliminary plat that was approved back in 2022, except the performance bond for the setting of the lot corners, performance bond for the remaining sidewalks, and then the maintenance bond. You'd waive the secondary means of emergency access requirement that's really only pertinent for that center cul-de-sac that's here on the plat, and then the, we had the note here, final plat not to be recorded until the payment in full of the 2024 property taxes, and since we've issued the staff report and published the agenda, the property taxes have been recorded as paid, and so the developer has paid those, we have that, no longer as a consideration. Item three could drop out, or just leave it in. At this point, we could, after the board approval, we can move forward with recording, taxes are not a hindrance on our recording. You could also opt to deny this for that, should you choose to do that, to be on the basis of one of the items not being consistent is how we would, we would believe that would occur. It's not consistent with the DRI development order, not consistent with the preliminary plat. I don't think that's an option for you, but we do give you that option every time, or you could continue it to a time and date certain. Both Mr. Smith and Mr. Finley are present for any questions you have of the developer. With that, I'll close, submit my report for the record, wait any questions or comments. Yes, sir.
It looks like the drainage water is going to go to those two lakes or those two ponds.
I think that's principally where they'll go, and then, and then from there, they flow south into that.
Now, where do they go if they overflow?
Jerry, you want to come up?
You'll have to come up, Mr. Finley.
It's a trickle to the south though, isn't it?
But the drainage goes to those two lakes, correct?
Jerry Finley, Finley Engineering. The drainage goes to the lakes, they pop off to the east, to the Strickland Canal, which you see.
That goes north-south?
It goes north-south there, and it runs north under Old Dixie Highway, goes into the Palm Coast Canal system, and then goes into Butlow Creek.
All right, good answer.
Yeah, flows north. Any other questions for Mr. Mangle, for the developer? All right, open it for public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. If you make your motion to approve, you can make the motion with items one and two as stated in the agenda, unless you want to read it all, because item three is not relevant anymore, correct? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the request for final plat for Plantation Bay, Section 2A through F, Unit 12A.
Second.
With the conditions, did you add the conditions?
Yes, with the conditions.
Okay. With the conditions, Ms. Pennington?
Yeah.
Second.
All right, so we have motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Seeing no other questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. You too. All right, item 8E, considerations for approval of purchase and sale agreement with Marjorie D. McCrany for the purchase of eight contiguous parcels of land totaling 27.49 plus or minus acres, utilizing environmentally sensitive lands program funds. Mr. Mangle, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. After our last meeting, we did receive the WDO report, you have that, I think, in your packet, along with the, that home inspector's report, which also included the pool report and the roof report as subreports there. Just to refresh everybody's memory, these are the eight parcels that are part of the purchase. Myself and Ms. Petito had gone and met with Ms. McCrany after some discussion, both by phone, well, mainly by phone, the county attorney, and also previously with the county administrator, and we were able to negotiate then a reduction in the price, purchase price from 1.245 million to 1.145 million, related to some items of concern that we had in the home inspection report. So what that effectively becomes, in our minds, final offer, that, and that $100,000 consideration will allow us then to go and make those corrections that are there. For the most part, there are, there's some, I'd say, I'd say they're minor in their nature, but they have some significance because they're maintenance-related, and so if they're not taken care of, there was some caps on the, on the pediment, on the, on the, on the walls that are there, the, and so that needs to be looked at, where there's some cracks that are showing there in the stucco, and so that's something that we intend to take that $100,000, put that into that, that maintenance of the building, for us to be able to use it as eventual camp store is what our hope is. And so with that, the request from staff was that the board approve the budget transfer and purchase and sale agreement with Ms. McCrany, subject to any adjustments made by the county attorney to the agreement for their title purposes, for other terms, for the purchase of the eight contiguous parcels of land totaling 27.49 acres, purchase price not to exceed 1,145,000, using environmentally sensitive lands program funds, and otherwise approve the closing of the transaction upon satisfaction of all terms within the purchase and sale agreement. Also, for the board's information, Ms. McCrany, you may have seen that email, she has signed the purchase and sale agreement as of this afternoon, so we do have that signed.
Great, thank you. Questions for Mr. Mangle? Thank you for the clarification on the report. I have one question, do you know the, are these easements that can be between the parcels that are outlined, those can be removed since we've, we'll have, if we acquire all the parcels?
Those are, those are platted paper streets, and so that our intent then at some point, and not, we hadn't talked too much about this, but I believe that the board would want to vacate those road right-of-ways, there's no roads there, and then we could also consider then unity of title for the entire property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, for the record and for the public's knowledge, why are we buying this property?
Buying it for several reasons. It supports our Dead Lake campground that's just to the, the south and west of this. It also then, hopefully will help with some revenue generation that we've had. It will effectively double the size of the campsites that are there, and, and President Dead Lake, it's, it's got some environmental sensitivity also along that western edge, it's got acre of wetlands, I think, that you saw there, and it's got some historic significance also, because it had been generally part of the, the old St. John's Park plat that had had the old hotel that was associated with the, the Dead Lake, the, the dead end of the, what had been the, the travel route down along the St. Johns, had come down Crescent Lake and the, and the ferries, the boat stopped here.
One of the, one thing that wasn't mentioned by Adam was that, for those in attendance that may not know, was that we, one of our legislative asks last year was $10 million from the state of Florida for purchase of conservation lands, so this would be one of those fulfilling that ask, because that's, it's coming basically out of that coffer of funds we received.
Well, this is ESL.
Oh, ESL, apologies. Well, we put it all into that, correct?
I don't know.
Ms. Petito, I think so.
The state funding that we had received, the first $3 million was specific to certain projects, the second $10 million, it limited to, could be Florida Forever Program, it projects or properties, it could be part of the wildlife corridor, it could be anything for like stormwater conservation, and a catch-all would be, and anything on our ESL list. I don't know specifically what pot of money this is coming from, because we've got some other negotiations and things working that, at the end of the day, it is all coming out of the same bucket of funding that'll get reported back, but not to pigeonhole one sort of funding.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear that it was, that we had dedicated funding for conservation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, it's a 60-day close, she's asked for a little bit of extra time on the close.
That's correct, and that, that may be the, the spot for negotiation. We've also talked about if, if that runs longer, presently her son's a tenant in the home, if he needs that longer time, we've talked about potentially a leaseback where we may close, then he'll leaseback to, to, for as long as, as he needs to be able to stay there. I think we'll probably have some more definite language added if we need to, to get there.
And if I could add to Commissioner Hanson's questions, there's a list of primary and secondary program objectives for acquiring the parcels, and it meets multiple of those program objectives, which call nature tourism, which again is, since it's adjacent to Bull Creek, and we'll be able to add additional spots for camping spots for the, mainly for the season, the fishing season, but also there was one in here about adjacency, enhance existing recreational facilities and reserve areas by requiring adjoining properties, so that you can pull them together into larger parcels for the public.
We'd had one point, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I didn't say it this time, but this had been previously placed on the priority A list by the Land Acquisition Committee, and then you do about the previous recommendation for acquiring only the westernmost 10 acres, when we returned back to the LAC at its last meeting, presented totality of what we were talking about, our plans, mainly the rejection before was, our plans weren't very clear. The LAC did come back and make its recommendation for the board to approve the purchase at the, at the negotiated price.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this time I'll open up for public comment. If there's anybody in the public who wishes to address the commission on this item, you can come up now. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Anybody want to make the motion on this one?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 8E, consideration for approval of purchase and sale agreement with Marjorie D. McCrany for the purchase of eight contiguous parcels of land totaling 27.49 acres, utilizing our environmentally sensitive land program funds.
Second.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Pennington, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Mangle? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. McCrany. All right, we'll move on to item nine, public hearings. 9A is a request to delay. That was removed, sorry, my bad, I'm looking at an old agenda, that one was.
We were, Mr. Chairman, we were asking that if anyone was present that wanted to make a public comment, they could do, still do so. We did place a public notice out in the, in the group for the meeting, but at this point, the applicant has requested that be postponed indefinitely. We don't have a date for that, so there is no item to continue, because we would not continue it to a time and date certain, we will have to do public notice again, but if you can, open it up for anyone who is present, who had received notice, who feels that they will not be available for a future subsequent meeting.
Okay, so this item 9A, a request for delay, to delay subdivision variance request for the dooring color homes item has been, will not be presented tonight, but I will open the floor for public comment on this item. So if there's anybody that wants to speak to this item, you can come up to the podium. I think everybody got the message, thank you. Seeing none, public comment, we'll close public comment, and with that, that will be it for that item.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item 9B, consideration of a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget in the amount of $151,361,531, and establishing the bond cap improvement reference rev fund, 2024 fund. Mr. Brower is presenting this.
Mr. Chair, John Brower, Financial Services, this is a part of the annual process that we do of carrying forward money and budget from last fiscal year to the current fiscal year, and in addition, this year, we're asking for, to create the Fund 1216 for the bond capital improvement refinancing revenue bonds 2024, which is coming up in the beginning of January. The board already approved it, the closing is actually in the beginning of January.
All right, thank you. Questions for Mr. Brower?
Yeah, so what are you asking us to approve here?
Approve amending the budget in that, in the amount $151,361,531, and creating or establishing the debt service fund for the refinancing of the old debt, 2015 debt, into the 2024 revenue debt fund for debt service.
All right, any other questions? All right, no questions, I'll open this up for public comment. At this time, if anybody wishes to address the commission on this item 9B, now's the time to come up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll try. I move that we approve amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget in the amount of $151,361,531, and establishing the bond cap improvement revenue, reference revenue 2024 fund, Fund 1216.
I'll second.
We get that?
I think that's close enough, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. Any final comments or questions for Mr. Brower? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Item 9C, this is a quasi-judicial item, project number 2024-110014, request for an appeal of the Planning and Development Board's decision approving a special exception for a professional office and yoga studio at 3 Pamela Parkway. Mr. Mangle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, we'll hold off for a quasi, well, we'll ask Mr. Hanson when he comes, well, you lost two of them.
I cleared the room.
All right, we'll hold off just one minute, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cue the Jeopardy music. In, in the old days, it would be Mr. O'Brien. We're moving along okay? Taking just a brief moment, no, it's okay, it's quite all right. Anybody can feel free to ask me for a break at any time. All right, so this is 9C, it's a quasi-judicial, I'm going to ask each of you for any ex parte disclosures. Commissioner Hanson?
I've received several emails against this, or supporting the appeal.
Commissioner Pennington?
None.
Okay. Commissioner Carney?
Yes, I just received some emails.
Okay, were those copied to others or just to you?
No, just to me.
We typically ask for a little bit of backup information, just so the applicants know what the gist of your communications were.
I believe there were just a couple opposing or asking us not to, not to vote for the appeal.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson?
I don't recall seeing any from any of these names.
Okay. I had a couple emails that I forwarded to Mr. Mangle and Mr. Moylan to make part of the public record on the agenda, had one conversation with the attorney for the applicant for the owner, which really wasn't any specific questions at all, just. wasn't any specific questions at all, just, just a general conversation, no details about specifics of the application.
I apologize, the two emails that I did receive from Chair Dance were from, one was from Mr. Mike Garrett, the other one was from Mrs. Christina Morris. And so those names are probably familiar to you. Those two are both part of the neighbor group, part of the neighbor appeal. They were both asking for the neighbor appeal to be granted, so. With that, this is a little unique. We had not expected to have an appeal filed both ways. So we have an appeal in this situation by the neighbors that are adjacent. That's under the 110014, what I'm referring to as a neighbor appeal. And then an appeal heard under separate application 110039, what I'm referring to as the owner appeal that's been filed by the property owners on the basis that one of the conditions they don't agree to, that was placed by the, by the planning board, and they would like to see that condition eliminated by the Board of County Commissioners. To give you some orientation of the subject property, it's on the west side of A1A North Ocean Shore, on the north side of Pamela Parkway. You can see it here, outline's got heavily, heavy tree covered to it. It does have a commercial use. I think it's under the real estate office to the north that joins it. I think that one had gone through a previous special exception, I want to say back in 2004 to 2006. Mr. Garrett's property is the property that immediately joins this to the west, and that is where his home is located. And so the, from a land use standpoint, mixed use, low intensity is a designation of this parcel, and then along with that, then the residential limited commercial. Residential limited commercial giving the ability for the special exception to be requested for, in this case, the real estate office, professional office, and the yoga studio, which is being treated as a school of instruction. And so those two special exceptions were requested under a single application and were considered by the planning board at the planning board's September meeting, and then were brought back for the addition of a time limit at the board's October meeting. From the flood maps, all of this is outside of a special flood hazard area. Soils are consistent then with not having any wetlands, and there are no wetlands on the property. So this was that initial survey that came back on the parcel itself that showed the extent of the improvements that were there at the time of the purchase. It showed the home approximately 1,200 square feet, inclusive of the two covered porches, shed in the back, a pump house, another shed closer to the property line. All of these uses in development consistent with its use, prior use as a single family home, single family home dating back to about 1965. This was a plan that showed, a demo plan. It showed that back porch to be removed, reducing building with finished floor elevation of 15.16 feet, a covered concrete front porch, and then those pump houses and sheds at the back and that crosshatching, all that crosshatching showing the sheds, outbuildings to be removed. This was significant in our review because this was showing the existing trees to remain. And so that was one of the considerations that we had. The Xs that you see there are spot elevations that are on the site. If you remember back also, this was part of a alternative surface approval that had went through Board of County Commissioners earlier in the year, where what had happened was because of their showing 11 parking spaces, I think initially, there was a request that they didn't want to have to pave them. Fewer than 10 spaces in A1A do not have to be paved, but if you're 10 or more, inclusive of your handicap, then you have to pave all of your parking spaces. So they had come in, they were showing 11 spaces, they got approval from the board to have shell as an alternative parking surface. So the board had previously approved that. This was the plan that we had that had come in most recently with the special exception application itself. And this is the one that I referred to in the staff report that you had for record. So it's right at about half an acre in size, that original request for the real estate office yoga studio, granted by the planning and development board, subject to conditions, there were 10 conditions set initially, and then the 11th was the one-year time limit to commence, and then two years to complete. Conversion of existing single family dwelling into a real estate office, attached roof porch as a yoga studio. That conversion of the home would require building permitting at some point in order to meet that change of use requirement from a home to an office. The space of the plan I looked at, I think that's what we reviewed there, had eight compacted shell parking spaces, one paved ADA compliant parking space. We had that material deviation. A1A committee review letters in your packet, and that dates back to June, where they had come back in favor of the request, and really as a precursor to the parking surface deviation. All index tree canopy is, is to be preserved and was preserved from the onset. No comments or objections were received before our October, maybe fix that, before the September planning board meeting. That September board meeting was the one where we had the public comments that were, that were made. October was when we changed the, added the time limit at that second planning board meeting. So resulted in the two appeals, one by the neighbors, one by the property owner. The neighbors are appealing it mainly based on the comments that were, that were raised at the planning board, and those were related to increased commercial traffic on Pamela Parkway, which is a dirt road surface. It's 50 foot wide right of way, but it basically is a single track dirt road typical to other residential subdivision streets in the hammock, parking, and then the noise. The property owner appeal is related to condition number 10, and the conditions that were placed by the, maybe it's 11 actually, now I'm saying, I think it was 12 total. 11 was the, was the one that was talking about amplified sound and zumba to be taken off-site. And so those were specific to what was described as a zumba training that would happen on the site. The appeals for your review are based on the planning and development board's record with no new testament evidence to be presented. County staff contends that both appellants have not satisfied their burden of providing relevant evidence from the record to support their, their respective applications. Board should deny both appeals is our stance on this. Neighbor appeal and owner appeal cannot both be approved. And so that's the other part is, for your consideration, is you can't, you can't do both. One point to note, to call out in the staff report, I maybe didn't emphasize it enough, the guidelines that are there, nine guidelines for special exceptions are those guidelines that we know planning board is to review as part of their consideration of a special exception. We have treated them as if they are synonymous with criteria, but the LDC, as it's written now, reads very much that they are guidelines. They are intended to guide the planning board's decision. The site plan consideration that's here, and I wrote it into the staff report, that actually follows later. So as far as site plan approval, that does not happen at planning board for this as a half acre parcel. The half acre parcel, less than five acres in size, would have to go through TRC, Technical Review Committee approval, for its final site plan approval. Planning board's threshold was, was there sufficient evidence made on the record, testimony, evidence, the site plan itself, to establish the use approval at the time of their review? And I believe because the planning board made their decision, provided initially 11 conditions, subsequently 12 in total, that they had sufficient evidence based on the submittal in order to make the approval of the special exception for the yoga studio and the professional office for the real estate, real estate office. And so that with those conditions in place, to follow where I'm heading, there were still things that needed to be done on the site plan, but that would follow after the approval came in from the planning board for the use. The technical review committee approves the site plan that follows. So ultimately, there's three determinations that you've got to make as the board, as it relates to these appeals, whether the planning and development board's decision was supported by competent substantial evidence, whether due process was accorded, and whether the essential requirements of law, primarily the nine criteria for special exceptions with the LDC have been observed. And then the second item then, based on those, Board of County Commissioners may only take one of the following actions: affirm the planning and development board's decision, remand the matter for further proceedings with direction on how the planning and development board failed to comply with the above standards, or overturn the decision of the planning and development board, thereby granting the petition. But with that, I think there's five options? I lost track. And this is where it gets a little off, and we've tried to be as specific as we can. I apologize, I'm going to read these into the record, because I think they're important for the audience also to understand the different dynamics that are here. So as we're viewing option one, option one would be the neighbor appeal being approved. Approve the neighbor appeal request, deny the owner appeal request, overturning the planning and development board's approval of the special exception for professional office and yoga studio in the RC residential limited commercial use district at 3 Pamela Parkway. This course of action, the Board of County Commissioners will be overturning the decision of the planning and development board returning the property to the status quo before the special exception request was made. The subject parcel may be used as a single family dwelling pending any special exception application request. That's the neighbor appeal approval. Option two would be the owner appeal approval. Option two, approve the owner appeal request and deny the neighbor appeal request, amending the planning and development board's approval of this special exception for professional office and yoga studio in the RC residential limited commercial use district at 3 Pamela Parkway to allow zumba classes and amplified noise within a completely enclosed building, but prohibiting zumba classes and amplified noise in outdoor areas on the subject parcel. This course of action, the Board of County Commissioners will be affirming the planning and development board's decision to grant the special exception, but amending condition number 11, as requested by the owner. Subject parcel may be used as professional office and yoga studio, subject to the conditions contained in the planning and development board's order, except that zumba classes and amplified noise will be permitted within a completely enclosed building. That's the owner appeal approval. Option three, this is staff's recommendations, we don't feel that the appellants carried the burden, either one of them. Option three is denial of both. Deny both the neighbor appeal and the owner appeal requests, upholding the planning and development board's approval of the special exception, along with the conditions included in the board's order for a professional office and yoga studio in the RC district at 3 Pamela Parkway. With this course of action, Board of County Commissioners will be affirming the planning and development board's decision to grant the special exception with the conditions as originally imposed by the planning and development board. Subject parcel may be used as a professional office and yoga studio, subject to the conditions contained in the planning and development board's order. Option four, remand this back to the planning and development board, please don't. Remand the special exception approval back to the planning and development board for further proceedings, thank you for a little levity, with direction on how the planning and development board failed to base its decision on competent substantial evidence, accord due process, and/or observe the essential requirements of law. Those three criteria you were directed on before, and so those are those three specific criteria. In any, any remanding, you've got to find one or more of those to be in play here. Special exception use is held in abeyance until the planning and development board renders a decision on the special exception as remanded. And option five, continue, please don't. The, continue the Board of County Commissioners review of the appeals to a time and date certain. A continuance should be for the appellants or for staff to provide additional information to the Board of County Commissioners. Certainly four and five are viable options for you, you know, four being remanding back, five continuance. If you need more information from us, applicants, or from staff, we can certainly do that on option five. And then that last one to note, and I put it in the staff report, I wanted to repeat it here, it's not related to any of the five options as much as just, so you know it's in play. Like a rezoning, there's not a six-month bar on a subsequent application. So we have in our LDC, when a rezoning is denied by the Board of County Commissioners, you can't reapply for the same or similar use for a six-month period. That doesn't exist for special exceptions. So there could be, regardless of how this works out, there could be a subsequent special exception application filed for this same property for a very similar use almost immediately after this decision is, is made, however it's, however it's done. And just keep that in mind. With that, I think I've covered everything I intended to cover. I'll close and wait any questions or comments from you. I know that Mr. Bear is present on behalf of Mr. Garrett. I know that Mr. Smento is present on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Evans-Volano, and so that that's your legal team that's present. And certainly I'm available for any questions you have about the previous proceedings at the planning board in September or in October. With that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Clarification. So this, let me catch my thought here, I had a few different ones. This, there can't be new, no new evidence introduced, so we have to go off the same information presented to the planning board.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And, and there's three, right, as an appellate authority, we, as I understand, there's three things that we have to evaluate, determine whether the PLDRB decision was supported by competent substantial evidence, whether due process was accorded, or whether the essential requirements of law, those nine criteria have been observed. That's, that's the limit of what we, in this position, are reviewing.
That's correct, yes, sir.
The three of us have had the opportunity to do this, unfortunately, once before, and I know this is brand new for our new commissioners, and it's, it's, it's not the normal seat that we take in these things. So with that, we, is there any questions for Mr. Mangle?
Okay. Well, yeah.
Okay.
I was in favor of this until the word zumba came into play. It seemed like a good use for the neighborhood and yoga classes and all that thing. And then two things happened. One, unbeknownst to us until we read it here, that the addition of zumba came in, and the planning board actually picked up on that and said, no. They said no to that because that's going to interfere with the neighborhood. The other thing was parking. The, the planning board was, was very clear about no off-street parking. You could only use the parking that you had. And the, the owner said, well, I have overflow parking. I see, I see nothing about overflow parking anywhere, and as a matter of fact, pretty familiar with that area, there is no overflow parking unless you say I'm going to park on the road. And, and the planning board was real clear about that. There will be no parking on the, on Pamela Parkway. So those two things I find troubling, because I would support the, you know, the neighbors on the zumba issue. And the planning board obviously picked up on that and said, no, you have to move that off, off-site. So, thank you.
And I think to emphasize, you're completely correct on the, and hopefully that bore out in the minutes in September. That was the basis for criteria 11, or condition 11 being added, was specific to the presentation that was made by the owner and then also by the neighbor's comments. And I, I think safe to say that the planning board and the comments from the neighbors, and certainly staff's aware of it too, we've had enough special exceptions where we've had conditions related to parking completely on a parcel, and then it doesn't work out that way.
Right.
And so I think that came through.
That, that comment by the owner is what I caught, I picked up on and said, yeah, where? Where are you going to?
Yes, sir.
Overflow parking? No.
First, Adam, it's a, it's a half acre, but the 9C shows us as 8.09 acres.
Did I?
Just, just because.
Is that on the agenda itself?
Yeah, I just wanted you to know, it, it reflects 8.09. So can you put it on option three for just a minute?
Sure.
When the planning board approval came in, where is it here? Trying to find it. Somewhere here. There was a, maybe it's option two. There was, go to option two, I'm sorry. The approval for the owner. How did the planning board determine, or how did they see the enforcement of no zumba and no amplified noise?
It was, it was described by the applicant as the classes would occur within a outdoor covered patio. And so we, we had thought that that would be easy enough that owners adjacent to it would, would be able to recognize the activity, would complain to code enforcement. We go out there and confirm it happened.
So our code enforcement would be the?
Arbitrator?
Yeah, enforcing the zumba, the provisions.
Versus hot yoga or hot ballet or whatever, yeah.
So when the planning board was taking all those nine items into consideration, and they came up with this zumba, no amplified noise, and no zumba, they assumed that code enforcement would just be regularly citing the special exception?
I think it would, I think our expectation was that it would, it would be complaint-driven, just like most everything we have is, is through code enforcement, so we wouldn't be necessarily regularly patrolling it, but.
Could enforcement enforce special exceptions, something that's not typical in code? They would?
Yes.
Not in code.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's treated as a zoning violation, Article III violation. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Mangle, can I ask this question to find out what? That's a commercial, residential commercial area.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything next door on the left or the right of it?
To the north is another real estate office, also approved through a special exception. And then to the south, I don't remember. I think it's...
It looked like there was a vacant parcel.
I think it's vacant.
It's the school board.
School board parcel.
Yeah, school board property.
Okay.
Oh, there's one lot there. I'm sorry. There's a lot there, and then behind is a lot.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Behind the lot is the school board.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was really confused, confused there for a second, because I'm like, is there somebody from the school board saying that they're here? So the parcel that's on the corner is vacant and undeveloped, and then to the south is the school board's 12 acres and change, I think? Anyway.
So then noise would travel to another real estate office, a vacant lot, and, I'm sorry, ma'am, please let me allow my opportunity to question. And what's in the back end there?
The back, directly abutting the property, is a single-family residence.
So it does back up to a single-family residence?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
So the patio would be in the rear of the home?
Yes, ma'am.
And then address the back of the residence? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to take this moment to address the people and the public that's here. I watched the Planning Board video during this event, this, when the Planning Board heard this, and what I heard was unacceptable, and we won't have that here tonight, okay? Outbursts from the back of the room will not be tolerated. It makes terrible theater for the people that are watching. They can't hear you, so they have no idea what's going on, but it disrupts the activity that's going up here. So take notes of the comments that are being said. You'll have time during public comment to address them, but I will have to ask you to leave if there are any outbursts from the back, okay? Just want to make that clear from the beginning. Any other questions, Ms. Richardson, Ms. Carney?
I met with Adam, and I think I'd just like to move this along and see, see what falls out here.
All right. I'm going to make a few statements now before public comment, because I want to be able to have the other attorneys in the room be able to comment. So in my opinion of how we are acting in this role, and regarding special exception applications, I have a discrepancy with what Mr. Mangle said about the purpose of special exceptions and the role of the site plan. It's not the role, right? We have nine conditions, and in a few of the conditions, it was stated that, you know, that we will just use the land development code as the basis for meeting the criteria. But special exception applications are to, right, to review and prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards in conformity with the development regulations. So you actually have to show, in those nine items, you have to show in sketch form, in site plan form, those conditions so that the public has an opportunity to review them and comment on them, and as if they are appropriate or not. So I start off with a few of the items of the nine that I don't believe substantial competent evidence was presented in order to, for the Planning Board to make an appropriate comment or conditions. So one is, and help me understand the off-street parking. So the site, the site plan has a data table that has a requirement for 10 spaces, but we only show nine. So how was that discrepancy addressed in the Planning Board? If that's a significant issue with the site plan, or that's a discrepancy?
Discrepancy, it did not come up at the Planning Board.
Okay.
That I recall.
And I understand you would say, well, that would go back to the TRC.
It has to.
Right. But it's also a, address the overflow comments that were placed into record, that overflow parking would be used, and there's no accommodation in the site plan for overflow parking. So there's nothing, there's no evidence that I see that accommodates overflow parking.
There can be none.
There can be none, but that goes back to Commissioner Hanson's comment. The, so I don't think on item two that we've met, we've met the requirement.
Mr. Chairman, the guideline?
Pardon me?
Sorry, I know that we will differ on that, but the guideline, the section there, "Making his determination, the Board shall be guided by the following," and so just emphasize that language. Again, I'm not arguing for an applicant one way or the other. Then the nine criteria, as we've referred to them before, they're listed below. It's guided by the following. I'll let you continue.
All right, that's item number two. It talks about parking.
Yes, sir.
Item number three, refuse and service areas shall be located with consideration for relevant factors, and there was no refuse or service areas identified in the site plan. So there was no, there was nothing for the public to comment on in regard to locations of refuse or service areas. That's...
Well, that was handled by the owner when he said, "I don't need that. I'm going to dispose of my trash like I normally would. I'm going to have a trash can and put it out."
Which are normally located somewhere.
Just the normal trash. That was his answer to that.
Which are normally located in some area. There's a refuse area located somewhere.
In his garage.
The, item five, screening and buffering shall be provided, which preserves or improves compatibility and harmony of use and structure between the proposed use and adjacent and nearby properties according to the type, dimension, and character of the proposed use. There was no landscape or buffer plan as part of the application. Typically, you have two layers. One is building setbacks, the other is landscape buffers. So those weren't provided to give the public an opportunity to review buffering between incompatible land uses. And it would have, it would have revealed another issue, that there was insufficient buffer along Pamela Parkway for the parking. So there was already a discrepancy on an insufficient buffer along Pamela Parkway, which does affect the site plan. And if those buffers had been labeled, it would have been a point of discussion for the public and for the Planning Board. There's also a criteria for, no new structure shall be placed within 50 feet, this is in the A1A scenic overlay. No new structure shall be placed within 50 feet of an existing residential primary structure on an adjoining parcel. And that wasn't noticed, that there was, or that there is or could be a conflict, and as I understand, that is an issue with the site plan. So I don't believe that item had the substantial competent evidence was presented. And same with item six, seems innocuous, signs and exterior lighting. There was no location of a sign for the public or the Planning Board to make comment on a sign location. I don't believe we can just refer to the land development code and say, "It's going to meet the land development code." That's not the objective of special exceptions. It's for public input to be able to comment on those items. And the appeal of condition 11 is ambiguous. I think, you know, it needed additional clarity for that. So those are my comments on it. I'll wait for additional input from the public. Anybody else, any questions before I open it up? Do we need presentations prior from each?
I think that'd be appropriate. I didn't discuss that previously with Mr. Baer and Mr. Smento. I think that if you could treat both of them as applicants here, give them afforded 15 minutes for each side. I think Mr. Baer's application, since his was first, would probably be the first one to hear from, and then followed by Mr. Smento. And then, you know, certainly if you want to change the times, how or they need to do that, please do so. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baer is coming up.
Good evening, members of the Commission, new commissioners, welcome to the Board. My name is Dennis Baer, and I represent the assorted neighbors that are in closest proximity to this particular project, in particular Mike Garrett. I've known Mike. He was a building official with Warman Beach for years, dealt with him in that capacity there. I was at the commission meeting, wasn't representing, neither party was represented by counsel at the commission meeting, which may have led to some of the tumultuous comments going back and forth.
At the Planning Board?
At the Planning Board meeting, excuse me. Our position is that the application is woefully incomplete, as some of the comments have already come up with. I was in the audience when all of a sudden this whole thing of Zumba came up. You know, I think of yoga back in the 1970s, nice, quiet. You've got an open porch facing directly onto the Garrett's property with music that can go up to 90 decibels. So that's not relaxing, that's not quiet, it's not the character of the neighborhood. And this is a well-established neighborhood up in the hammock. A couple of things, the plans are not complete, parking issue's been mentioned, no buffers. And I've talked to Adam about this a little bit, too. The other part that we have is, if you look in the staff report, and it mentions that the site development plan requirements for special exception uses requires that in the scenic A1A corridor, that there be simultaneous review. In the site development plan, with all proposed improvements, shall illustrate a tree survey of all index trees was done. But it doesn't have any of the other elements, as was mentioned, for a site plan. Parking's incomplete, signage is incomplete. Now we understand that the Zumba will be completely enclosed, but that's not part of the plans. Are they going to put a wall on the porch? Is it going to be soundproof? Or is it just going to be a canvas that comes down, or a screened-in porch? There's just no specificity. Adam goes on to say in the staff report that, you know, this requirement of no new structure shall be placed within 50 feet of an existing residential primary structure, but the site plan that was submitted by CIMEC Engineering, in bearing the digital signature and seal of Juan Pablo Rodriguez dated August 29th, reduced the minimum rear setback to 27 feet. So you had initial set of plans, and then a reduced set of plans. Our position is it should be denied. If they want to reapply and come back with specificity, I'm not going to say this would be rewarding, you know, the behavior, but it's very incomplete, and it really doesn't warrant proceeding with such vagueness that surrounds this entire project. Is it going to be paved or unpaved parking? Plans show it paved, but they got an exception for unpaved parking. That'll deal with stormwater, that'll deal with water retention issues, there are no elevations. So we just think that it should be sent back. There's not sufficient transparency, as Mr. Garrett pointed out in his appeal. And I think that clearly, the burden at the Planning Board level to provide competent substantial evidence was on the applicant. We were there, we registered our, it's hard for us to present competent substantial evidence when there's no evidence to comment on, because their plans were so incomplete. So our position is that the appeal by the neighbors should be granted, special exception denied. Let them go back to the drawing board and come back with a complete set of plans. I'd like to reserve a few minutes at the end. Traffic issue also with a narrow one-way street needs to be addressed. And we just think that, again, it is just woefully incomplete at this point. And therefore, you should grant our appeal and deny their appeal. And I'd like to have three minutes to close at the very end. Thank you.
Mr. Smento.
Good evening. How are you? Michael Smento for the applicant. I was brought in when we found out that the appeal by the neighboring landowners were filed. So anything that I say about what happened before is just based upon conversations with staff and/or my client. So we're here on the special exception appeal. You all have the guidance in which you review these substantial competent evidence. I think your staff would tell you that it's not your job to weigh whether that evidence was sufficient or not. That's left to the Planning Board. So our client is this. This is a group of people, a couple that moved here a long time ago, that came to the county and said, "What's the process of opening this business in the hammock?" And they started this in March or April of this year to take an existing home and convert it into a functioning commercial use, as has been anticipated forever by the land development code. They've had a commission meeting for the special exception. These are, again, individuals that aren't unrepresented and working through the process. They have two meetings with A1A scenic corridor to go through and present their plan, and that was approved or recommended approval by the A1A scenic corridor. They've had three technical staff review meetings in the public on their plan, and had many comments by staff and engineer and the community, and they've been changed. Then they have to go through two, two Planning Boards to get this approved. And now they're here today on a commission meeting. So unbeknownst to them, there are certain technical requirements that may or may not have to be provided. They have been guided by the county and the staff. The Planning Board, who particularly has the authority to approve this, they're the governing judicial body or the quasi-judicial setting, they've approved it. And so today, now we're second-guessing the entire process for the last nine months to a year, because there are some things as to whether it's guidance or required, the difference between what Mr. Dance said and Mr. Mangle said. So I'm just here to kind of play to the equities of the situation. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, whether these requirements were met or not. That is a decision, whether you all want to interpret the word guidance, whether it's specific guidance, whether it's a sketch plan, whether it's a technical review, because you do remember that after this process, if you were to deny both the appeals, it would proceed in the normal course of business as a technical site plan, in which full engineering drawings would have to be made, that they would have to be in strict compliance with your land development code. They would have to go through TRC, which is a public process, and the community has a ability to comment. And in the event that it was approved by staff and that community thought that it was still inconsistent with your land development code, they would have the ability to appeal a site plan to you. So this is one of the things that Mr. Dance and I have talked in the past about your special exception. What level of engineering and requirement is really required of your code? If you want to look at it as strict, not strict compliance, but very detailed plans, you're requiring an applicant to come with these types of plans and go through while just make it up 30, 40% engineering, rather than a sketch plan like you referred to earlier. And it's nobody's fault, it's just one of those things in our code that we've kind of figured out over the last 20 years. So I'd like to ask you that you deny the petition by the landowners, because we have complied with the entire process. And now we're here mincing words, whether it's a sketch plan, a site plan, guidance or technical ability, particularly when you know that the next step, if their appeal was denied, is that we go to the site plan, TRC, and then again, the ability to appeal. I want to apologize to you about our appeal. We found out about their appeal, so I said, "Well, let's take the advantage to get some clarity." I think, Vice Chair, you recognize sort of the language ambiguity, and I think you even mentioned it, Mr. Dance. This whole process was part of providing Zumba, whatever Zumba may or may not be, in the open-air platform, and the Planning Board and the community were particularly concerned about the noise impediment, right? And they understood that. And so, you know, whether we do Zumba outside, Latin dancing, clogging, or whatever it may be, I think it's really fundamental that it was about the impediment of noise on the neighboring community. So when the number 11 came out, we were really asking for clarity from you all as to what that meant. I mean, if you read it hyper-technically, this woman would not be able to play amplified music even indoors. She wouldn't be able to do Zumba there, but theoretically, they could have clogging out on the back deck, and that would not be a violation, except for noise ordinance. So we were just asking for clarity, having that this was really intended to be a noise protection for the community, and that Zumba, Latin dancing, whatever the case may be, would be permitted, and amplified music be permitted inside, and not just a blanket, none of that onsite. So that's where we're at. So we're asking you all to abide by the procedures. Hopefully, you say that, agree with Adam, that these were guidance requirements, and that we'll be back in the event that it doesn't comply with your land development code. and that we'll be back in the event that it doesn't comply with your Land Development Code after the technical site plan. So, and again, after public hearing and public participation on your TRC. So that's what we're having, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have or discussions. And I don't know if you can add further clarity to conditions or amending. I guess that's not things that you can do, but again, we're here to have a discussion with you if you need to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mangle, question. I was, if there was outdoor classroom discussed, how does that play into parking requirements? So I know at eating establishments, if you have outside areas dedicated to serving patrons, that has to be calculated into parking requirements. So my issue comes back to, are we, are we going, and I don't know, again, just a question about the parking and the use of the place, if it's restricted to just the building, that's what the site data table is, is the evidence that was shown was a building and site data based on the size of the building, not with outdoor classrooms, which could be another traffic generator that's not on the site table.
This was described as a 1,500-square-foot open-air addition with, it would be covered roof, and so it would be able to have a calculation applied to it.
It's not an enclosed building, the back part?
Correct. Yeah, as it was described at the September Planning and Development Board meeting, and as it was depicted, it was to be roofed, but not enclosed. And so effectively, we thought, I think it was even described as screen room. I'm not sure if that's correct, but it was to be open, not walled. It would be walled on one side, but not on three, as we understood it. And so you would be able to calculate that for that. I don't have that with me, but there would be a calculation that would be associated with that. As for outdoor, you're right. If it was an area designated for outdoor use, outdoor instruction, whatever that may be, and it's not something that would, I'm trying to think of like a competence course, where you would go from station to station, where it's not something that you would have an intermittent use, then you're calculating the totality of it. You would, you would sum those, those parts to get to the total parking demand.
Just my, I mean, I was reading the addition, proposed building addition, and refer to architectural plans, but the architectural plans weren't part of the application. So reading that, I assumed that it was an enclosed addition, but you're saying that is an open-air deck.
And that, open-air patio is what we understood, slab likely. I don't know if we got into even that detail, but that was part of the, I think that, for the most part, that was the basis of the neighbors' concerns when it was described as, as an open-air. That's where, you know, the applicant had come up and said, "I'm going to do Zumba classes in this open-air addition." And, you know, imagine, speaking for them, not speaking for them, that projection then would run westward into the neighborhood, I think is what the concern was.
Okay. All right. At this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Speakers can come up to the podium. You've got three minutes, and, yep, state your name. And if you could, if there's anybody in the back that wants to speak, you can come on up and grab a seat close to the front, and it'll help move things along. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Scott Tidwell. Six Pamela Parkway. I just want to say, I do apologize for the outbreaks at the last meeting in September and this one. These are our homes. We're very passionate about where we live. We love our neighborhood. I just want to make a couple of things. I think there was some, a couple misspeakings. To the south of Three Pamela is not a vacant lot. It's my neighbor, Four Pamela. So the lot's not vacant. That's his home. That's his property. Behind Four Pamela is a school park to the south. Two, it's not just the noise, it's the traffic. That's a dangerous curve. Every morning, the bus waits to come off of Pamela onto A1A while the other bus comes. And actually, they wait for the other bus to come to stop traffic, so it's safe for the school bus to leave Pamela. This happens every morning, 7:30-ish at o'clock, where the buses have to protect the other buses to leave our road. Number two, the parking's on the bin issue. It's a one-lane sand road. We walk our dogs there every day. Kids ride their bikes. It's going to be an issue. Especially when you're going to have, like, multiple businesses, or the idea of multiple businesses. It's going to increase traffic. It's going to add to the dangerous section there at A1A and Pamela. And it's going to cause potentially some more accidents to happen in that area. So noise, traffic, those are all my reasons for kind of not being in favor of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Nobody else? All right, you wanted your closing three minutes, Mr. Baer?
Again, Dennis Baer for the neighbors, and I don't think I'll take the full three minutes. First, Michael and I could go back and forth all night and debate some of these issues, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things. First, there's a huge difference between a special exception, which goes to the planning board, as far as the criteria that the planning board and then also the county commission consider. When it goes to TRC, it's a technical review. Citizens can get up and talk, but the standard of proof and what gets approved, citizens don't really have much say in it. This is the time to determine compatibility. TRC just determines technical requirements. So the compatibility issues, and I do agree with Michael, they don't have to site plan it down to, "Okay, this is where the curb stops are going, and this is where we're going to paint the lanes and things of this sort." But you at least have to have the basics. Where's the garbage going to go? Where's the signage going to be? Is it going to block the view of the school buses? It's going to, you know, what are the buffers going to be? I mean, just basics. We're going to have a five-foot buffer. The requirement has to be five foot within a year of planning. Where are they going to go? What noise attenuation is going to be included? Those are the types of things that you hear in a special exception hearing. TRC, does it meet the technical requirements? Check, 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 approved. You can't appeal that. It's a very limited scope of appeal if it just goes to TRC. And that's what we're doing here, is we're kicking down the can down the road for some of these issues that really need to be addressed now when you're determining the basic compatibility. As far as scenic A1A, they reviewed this back in June. Zumba wasn't on the radar screen at that point at all. We were talking about a quiet little yoga studio before the noise issue came in. The parking requirements still haven't been established. They would need a variance to proceed with what they have submitted to you tonight as far as the parking is concerned. So our position is, it's incomplete. Grant our appeal, deny their appeal. Thank you.
Mr. Schmento.
Very quickly, Michael Schmento for the applicant. You know, again, we go back to what the planning board heard. There was never a question asked why there's no location of sign, right? Maybe because there is no sign? So that wasn't discussed, but apparently they haven't made an application or intend to have a sign out there. Parking, from what we understand, based upon the expert opinions of your staff, the parking requirements for the use are met and satisfied. We talk about overflow parking. Well, there's no such thing as overflow, planning for overflow parking, because that's why we have parking requirements. If people decide to park in places they're not supposed to, that's not something that any owner can really take care of. But again, we've met your technical requirements, as are required under your code, according to your staff. Those were guidances. If you all choose that it's not guidance, that it's specificity, then that's the board's discretion, and that's what you have the power to do, and I think that's what we're asking. But again, we're asking that, you know, we certainly know that yoga is permissible. Zumba might be permissible if it was indoors, I don't know. If someone wanted to clog, or do hot yoga, or noisy yoga, I don't, I don't know the difference, but we're really getting into some splitting hairs. So we're requesting that you deny theirs. And if you so choose, to clarify condition number 11, to allow, at least allow us to play a radio inside. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public speakers, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for additional questions.
Yeah, Adam, what, if you deny both options, what happens?
Denying both appeals leaves the 12 conditions in place that were approved by the board, by the planning board, that were part of the order. The applicant then would proceed with a site plan submitted to the TRC, would have that reviewed, not only for compliance within the Land Development Code, but also for compliance with the 12 conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is maybe directly towards Mr. Moylan. During this process, number nine, "The economic effect of the proposed use on adjacent nearby properties shall be positive." How do we feel that the planning board addressed number nine?
I can't recall a specific conversation on that, but as I recall, the building, when these, when the applicant purchased this home, it was in a dilapidated state, and they're going to remove some dilapidated outbuildings and repair the structure, so one could infer that it would have a positive economic value on the property values in the area. But to be candid, I don't recall the planning board discussing that offhand. I don't know if you remember, Mr. Mangle.
No, I do not. I don't recall them speaking about a criteria or guideline number nine specifically.
Can, after they're done, can we see the options again? Thank you.
Some more questions?
I don't know if it's in the preview of this board to better define number 11. Should that not, should that not be done? Again, they're using a word, "Zumba," when I think the idea, well, it does say "and" amplified noise. I don't know. I just wish they wouldn't have used the word "Zumba." I wish they would have just stayed with amplified noise, because noise can be defined in decibels. Zumba, I mean, again, if it's 90 decibels, it's too loud. So that's a little, I mean, I just don't think it's our preview to do that. That's not what we're here for. I did attend, I was in the audience during the very first presentation to the Scenic Highway Group, the Hammock Association, I guess. And I did see the very first presentation on this parcel. It was very, it was very vague. It was very owner-driven. I don't know how much time people spend with you before they actually submit something, but our staff is here for these purposes, to hopefully get it right the first time, denying a denial, and then appealing an appeal. This is a little, little complex, but I don't think I have anything, any questions at this point. I just wish that we could get it right the first time.
I will just refer back to a couple points. One is the burden of the applicant to provide substantial competent evidence. The nine criteria are there for the applicant to spell out, for the public to be able to weigh in on appropriateness as a special exception for the uncompromising uses. I'm going to go back to the fact that there's no landscape plan or buffer plan for that to be able to be reviewed during the process by the public and the planning board that wasn't submitted by the applicant. The applicant didn't submit, even if it's verbiage, that says there's no trash receptacles and there's no sign. That's competent evidence from the applicant, that they're omitting those. But that wasn't part of the application either. I just think it needs to be remanded back to the planning board with these deficiencies noted. It's not, it's, it's, and the parking, the parking is not competent. It does not meet code as it has been displayed, and that needs to be redrawn. I mean, it's, how does it, how does it change if, when you move the parking back to the appropriate buffers off of Pamela Parkway? What does that do to it?
You lose spaces.
Yeah, so, I mean, that changes the building. I just don't see it.
So if I could, then, summing what you're saying, and so for the, for the purpose of the rest of the commission, and so this slide I think is important. So Chair Dance, you're saying that the determination that you would ask the Board of County Commissioners to make is that number one was not met. The Planning and Development Board's decision was not supported by competent substantial evidence. I've heard no discussion about due process. Sounds like due process was satisfied with both September and October's planning board hearings. Don't see anybody nodding, but I think that's fair enough to say. So on number three, would you then conclude also that the essential requirements of law were not observed? I guess that's maybe, maybe useless. If you, if you, number one, you're saying no to already, you don't need to pile on, but, but maybe with that in light, so if the, as Chair Dance has described it, number one was not met, then the action that you would then be pushed to would be remand the matter for further proceedings or direction on how the planning board failed to comply with the above standards, as based on the items raised by Chair Dance. And so that's what's been described so far. Did I sum it up correctly, sir?
Yeah, and as I read that, the planning board's decision has to be based on, on the competence, substantial competent evidence that's presented. So lacking that, that's, there's, there's no tie-in. So you could make it either, either three or one, because I've identified in three the ones that were deficient, but it's, I don't have, right? I think there's, I think the goal here is in these incompatible uses. I mean, there is a, as an A1A-fronted parcel, a use like this is, exists next door with a, with a real estate office that is compatible with the neighborhood, is not making noise, and I'll be corrected if anybody wants to say it is. The difference being the side-road access versus that one, too. But the, you know, there's a reason that commercial properties, even if they're homes that are converted to commercial, are abutting A1A. So I think there's room for the compatibility to be solved. I just don't think enough evidence was presented to support what the, what the residents are looking for, and not enough was presented to comment, for them to comment on. My opinion.
You wanted to have the review of the options, correct?
Yes, please. I actually think I could form a motion if everyone's done.
Option one was the neighbor appeal. That'd be approval, denying the owner's appeal. That overturns a decision, and then just leaves us where we're at. So that special, property can be used for special, for single-family dwelling, special exception is overturned, can be appealed to Circuit Court. Option two, approve the owner appeal request, deny the neighbor appeal. That affirms Planning and Development Board's decision with the 12 conditions. And then this would also then amend condition number 11. Back to Commissioner Carney's question, can you do that? I think we presented that to you as an option for you to consider, so we're saying, yes, you can. That's within your prerogative as the board. Option three would be to deny both of the appeals on the basis that they haven't carried their burden. That would affirm the Planning and Development Board's order. That would allow the applicant to move forward with the site plan under the existing 12 conditions. They'd have to meet them or just not, and not develop. Then four would be remand the special exception, go back to the Planning and Development Board. And again, I think following what Chair Dance has mentioned, you would be placing within the record specificity that's needed for the planning board to be able to look at in order to know how the essential requirements of law were not met, or the guidelines were not followed as far as competent substantial evidence. So you'd have to be very specific on that. We'd want that to happen, should option four be chosen. Option five would be continuing this hearing, back to this board, time and date certain.
And one clarifying question, even though we couldn't, we couldn't review new evidence, if it's remanded back, they have the ability to?
Yes, sir. Most definitely.
Amend and actually provide the nine-- Amend and actually provide the nine components back in their?
Cure it of or otherwise. If they choose to do so, then they cure the application if not and take the risk of a denial or an affirmation of approval by the planning board, which could just as well happen. You know, hope that doesn't happen, but planning board would come back and say, yes, we said yes, and it is what it is. And then remember here that the court at some point inserts into these depending on how those decisions are made here.
I'll just say, I mean, I want to get it right for you, for the owners, and I want to get it right for the neighbors. So I'd like to make a motion, Chair. I'd like to make a motion to remand nine C, project 2024 11 0014, back to the planning board for further review.
Second.
Have a motion, have a motion by Commissioner Pennington and a second by Commissioner Hanson to remand this item back to the Planning and Development Board for clarifying issues that were.
Brought up.
Will you be presenting those clarifying issues where the evidence was lacking or either on number three, either one? Okay. All right. So have a motion and a second. Is there any final questions or comments clarifying? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor of remanding back to the planning board signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. We have final comments, if you want to stick around, from the administrator and attorney and the commissioners, and then we'll do one final community outreach. Commissioner, let's know. County Administrator Petito, your report, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I wanted to recognize our dedicated general services staff for the creation of our holiday float. It was themed silver and gold. And I also wanted to specifically mention Director Mike Dixon and Assistant Administrator Holly Albanese for their hard work and dedication throughout the float season, we'll call it. And I see on display in the front is the banner from the City of Palm Coast 2024 Starlight Parade, Best of Parade. So it looked like a great, great event. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that one. I did also want to make you aware that last week, myself along with financial services staff, we met with the supervisor of elections regarding the funding for two upcoming special elections that have been added to her plate. So we have one, I think it was in January, and then one in March. But since this will be an increase in expense to her budget, we wanted to make sure that they had adequate funding to be able to carry out those election-related activities and just to ensure that we had a plan moving forward. So we were able to clarify that last week with her. And then also last week, myself and Jorge, we were presented with a master plan of the fairgrounds by a few of the community stakeholders. If you'd like, I can share that with you each probably one-on-one, and then we can bring that forward with some of their ideas. We do have a meeting scheduled on Wednesday this week on December 18th to meet with some remaining stakeholders and user groups regarding the Cattlemen's Hall and the Shelter Project. That way we can get this project moving along. We've got about 18 months to get it completed, so it's important that we kind of finalize what their desire outcome is and move forward with that project. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Hadeed?
I just have one update. The Florida Association of Counties did adopt our legislative proposal on amending the PACE program. So that was a successful effort. It was presented by Chair Dance to the Finance and Administration Committee, then by the full board following that committee approval. And that was to add a financial accountability disclosure standard where they would disclose expenditures to the local governments where they were serving as the PACE operator.
All right, thank you. All right, community outreach. This is another opportunity for community outreach. If anybody has stayed around for the final community outreach, now's the time to come up for public comment. There we go. You can come back again. So if you spoke earlier, you can speak again. I mean, you drove from Ocala, so get both of your times in.
Wrong point again from Ocala, but we do have property here in Flagler County for a reason. We love this place. Trying to take too much of the time. Really appreciate y'all's time and what you've done, what we're doing here. I think you heard everything earlier. I'm going to give you that, but I heard a couple of things. A little encouraging, I love Mrs. Carney, the question you asked kind of hit my business side, got me going a little bit on that end. And I know that it's an uphill battle sometimes because we are dealing with FCT and FDIP. And Ms. Petito had mentioned something too about maybe not going over Melanie and all that stuff. The one thing that I think that I just implore that maybe can help this work, if we can get on the phone, I'm not saying going over Melanie, I'm not saying whatever, but we're meeting with Marine Land on Thursday.
Right.
And I think that it's vital that we get them in on a Zoom at least somehow so they can understand what RAGA is. Because if they understand what RAGA is, we know what RAGA is. It is the river to sea. It's what makes our community great. It's what makes the natural state of that little section so great. And so I'm here to just kind of really push to, I know it may not happen, but I just implore and ask and that's, those extra efforts are made to try to get them on that Zoom call so that they can be at Thursday meeting because I think that's the important thing that's going to help maybe get this through to make it happen. Otherwise, as we know, I mean, I get it, I'm in business, I've dealt with it, you know, it's a slow process sometimes, saw that and, that said, really appreciate your time, really appreciate the hospitality. I expect nothing less because we bought property here to retire here one day and we actually love this place. So thank you all again, and again, hope that you take that into consideration.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Sarah Callahan with my daughter Grace. We have been residents here for about four years. We moved from Atlanta and while in Atlanta, I was inspired by a much older neighbor and friend of mine to start to know, you know, who's on the county, you know, who's the county commissioner, excuse me, county commissioners, who's your city council members, you know, be involved in local government. And at the time, I had very young children and oh my gosh, one day, maybe if I can even like manage to vote for the president these days, it would be amazing. But as we've moved to this town, I've just been very, yes, motivated just to participate more in local politics. It started with our, our small efforts to advocate for the ability to own chickens in our backyard and unfortunately that was denied. But here we are again tonight to learn a little bit more about local government. And what I'll say as a mom of four young children, first of all, to echo your comments, I really appreciate just being able to participate and see how all of this works. It's great education for me. It's great education for my daughter. And what I'll say is there are a lot of people, all ages, watching this process unfold. And so I would just advocate again for transparency. You know, I think that as elected officials, it's our hope that as we come to you, that we, we understand that we can bring our concerns and that they'll be heard and that there will be fair processes and that they'll be understandable to the average citizen. As I've watched all of this with Ragga Surf unfold, I've been like, wait, what happened? And then who said what and what happened? It's so confusing to just an master's degree, you know, educated citizen to understand how has this all unfolded and how are we now here? And there seems to be no way forward. So yeah, just in all of this, I just, I just want to say, I mean, first of all, again, thank you for your time. I've really appreciated just learning more about the process, but help a citizen like me to understand how when we have concerns and we bring them to government for help moving through the channels, like make it make sense. Help us to see how we go from a business that is well esteemed and loved in our community. When they run into an issue like this, what are the proper channels for them to move through without it just being like no response, no response, there's no communication back? I guess there was just nothing that could be done. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Last chance? Evening.
Hello. My name is Dr. Jared Ritter. I'm a physician. I have an office on A1A in the Hammock located 3.3 miles south of the Ragga Surf Cafe.
Exactly.
And I love the cafe. I have lots of patients that travel from Jacksonville. I have a lot of active-duty Navy service members, veterans I do VA evaluations for. They tell me they love the place because it's open. I'm a board-certified psychiatrist, so I have patients who have post-traumatic stress disorder. Being closed in, in spaces where they can't have a clear sight of view is challenging. They love the space there. I'm also a child psychiatrist, and I know the work that they do at Ragga Surf Cafe is inviting to families. And I just really want to say that I hope you consider what they're going through and their plight. I was really amazed when the county stepped in and said, here's a welcome mat, here's a space for you to land, whether that's temporary or however long it was meant to be. I think that's very commendable that the county took that measure. So I'm grateful that you all did that, whoever was involved in that decision-making process. The other thing I would say is I first came to Flagler County when I was about five years old, six years old, on a father-son fishing trip with our church. And that was my first time going down the Flagler Beach Pier. It was a very foggy morning. We had got up before sunrise and that just, that was a core memory for me. And it brought me back to Flagler County. My wife of 25 years, I proposed to her on Flagler Beach. And we live in Flagler Beach. My business is in Palm Coast and Ragga Cafe is, it's a landmark now. It was a place kind of forgotten about. And I think now it's drawn in a lot of people, not just from Flagler County, but across the country. There are people who travel through now and they make it a point to stop by there. It's not just about food, it's about community. And thank you. I thank you for this time.
Thank you. Public, any other public comment? All right, seeing that, we'll bring you back to the board for commissioned comments and reports. Commissioner Hanson, anything?
I'm glad to be back.
Glad to have you back, sir. Unhealthy. Commissioner Pennington?
Okay, I'm glad to be back.
We missed you earlier today.
Two things come to mind. One, man, people are passionate about food. And two, no good deed goes unpunished. And so I, you know, I know that when this decision was made back in August, it was very last minute. It was, I think, meant to be, you know, extending something to help a person that was in dire need.
We were going to save them.
Yeah, and, and here we are. But I'd be remiss if I didn't, and I guess I'm just confused. I know when we had discussed this, it was last minute, it was in August. I thought that legal told us that this was going to be requiring a resolution to be brought back and it would be formally brought back. So I guess my question is, one, why didn't we ever get to that step? I guess maybe I've missed something. And then two, and to some others who spoke, you know, we should have known that the DEP was going to require action there before we put someone there. And that goes back to the no good deed goes unpunished. So those are big issues right now for me with staff and legal. How did we get here? I think we wanted to do the right thing and probably should have been briefed that those two issues didn't get handled properly. And then I think to level set, you know, if this comes back ever, is allowed and the board does decide to do something like an RFP, I think it has to be clear expectations. It does not necessarily mean that RAGA would get the RFP. I mean, it's a process, others will bid for it, and I don't want, you know, to let a lot of people down if that never occurs or doesn't occur. And so I think that's, that's important. But I think there's two big takeaways here, and one is, you know, what happened? I thought we were going to have a formal discussion about it in September, and two is how did we miss the DEP on this?
Commissioner Carney?
Good questions, Leon. Just a little update about what I've been doing. I did go to the Florida League, or sorry, yeah, Florida League of Cities in Tampa and did my ethics training. Can't wait for that to happen every year. Oh, man. And the new commissioner boot camp, I found it very, I'm very glad that I went and participated. I do plan on continuing my, my training and am currently enrolled in a six-credit course on planning and development. My favorite subject. Adam will be buddies after this, I promise. I did participate in the Flagler Beach Parade and the Palm Coast Parade. And yes, in fact, a lot of kudos go out to Holly and Vicky and Mike for doing a fantastic job on a beautiful, crowd-pleasing theme and a wonderfully presented float. Thank you very much for all your time. I look forward to the staff breakfast this Thursday. This will be an experience as a newbie, right Pam? I did, I will be having a Zoom meeting to meet our lobbyist on Thursday. It's just a little, I'm used to working with lobbyists in my Flagler Beach job, and I really just want to do a general introduction. I did attend the Planning and Development Meeting this past Tuesday and the, there were no hearings. It was basically a review of the comp plan and where we are on the update for the comp plan. I did attend the Flagler Beach Business Bureau Meeting on the 10th. This is a quarterly meeting that the city has, the businesses have with the city administrator was, or the city manager was there, Mr. Martin and Commissioner Chair Spradley. They will be having the New Year's Eve fireworks with the surfboard drop again this New Year's Eve in Veterans Park. The pier contract has been awarded and soon with commencement in early 2025 for a grand total of $18 million. So there you have a bunch of zeros in Flagler Beach. I was telling everybody, what's the difference between being a commissioner in the county in Flagler Beach? It's a whole bunch of zeros, believe me. It is fully funded with a July 26 completion date, so that will be exciting for our county. FDOT did update on the A1A repaving from South 8th to North 18th with two new crosswalks being added, which is greatly needed on A1A. There will be some detours, of course, and single-lane operations during the construction. They did also announce that the Army Corps has agreed and believes that the renourishment of the southern area will be needed after Hurricane Milton. However, because of lack of funding, it won't be done until next year. So maybe this is a good tie-in, right? Hopefully with Reach 2 and the Army Corps coming back. They did announce also the hotel will be opening in June of 2025. Representative Greco was there and he did announce that water and resiliency is priority in 2025 for their session. I also attended the Flagler Beach bimonthly meeting on the 12th. The issue of annexation with Veranda Bay was on the agenda. There was a large turnout of citizens in addition to a letter being sent from the Preserve Bulo Creek Attorney Brent Spain. That letter was dated the day before the meeting and it was enough for them to table discussion on annexation. The annexation is being challenged due to the enclave. The agenda was. The agenda was tabled until the 23rd, giving the city some time to investigate. In the past, this board has dismissed the enclave issue. I do not know to what extent the county will be called upon to resolve this issue. So I would like to ask the board to direct our legal team to work with the city and the Preserve Bulo Creek group towards resolution and to use any negotiating power we may have to implement the issues presented by Attorney Moylan's memo of December the 4th. So there are still several issues out there. Don't know, again, an enclave is an enclave. I read the letter. Did everyone get a copy of the letter from Mr. Spain, Attorney Spain? Probably not. It went through the city. Did you all get Mr. Moylan's memo to the city? So I think this might be an opportunity for us to get more involved. When I talked to staff and attorneys that work for the county, they just said they basically need more direction from us on where we want to go or how involved we want to get. If the city's not asking for help, then I'm sure there's not much we can do except continue to communicate. But Mr. Hadid, in your opinion, would they ask for an opinion from us at all on the enclave or ask us to make any type of statements on the enclave?
I can't predict what they might ask us to do. We have been engaging with them quite considerably. As you may know, and I'm sure all of you know, we've gone to every meeting they've had and made presentations of our issues. And obviously, they take them under advisement.
Commissioner Pennington first raised the issue about the enclave early on. And we had a, it's on public record, our discussion about the enclave and...
Well, there are other issues. I mean, weren't you referring to all the issues that were presented? Yes. You know, the enclave is an issue. They could be sued. But there's no telling how that case might come out. This is somewhat unusual in the way this is being configured. There are eight parcels that are quote "constituting" the enclave. They will get no city services, and their taxes would go up by some four-plus mils just to be in the city if they were annexed.
And you cannot force them into an annex.
To me, the more pressing issue, there's a more, it's kind of related to annexation. You know, annexation is a process whereby a municipality can obtain contiguous property, which is going to be urban in character, urban growth area. That's what it's for. And I earlier sent you something that Mr., earlier today, so if you haven't read it, it's certainly all right, given our busy day. But Mr. Moylan mentioned to me that all the state reports, the state agency reports are back. And I know that some of you who are familiar with the land use process, you know that certain development orders have to go to the state agencies for review and comment. And they all came back, and all of them, every one of them, questioned what the city was doing because they had not submitted data and analysis or plans about how they were going to handle that urban area. So it's like, in the land use planning process, it's like a black hole because they have not addressed it. That includes the Florida Department of Transportation, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Now, we've weighed in on one issue there, and that is that they should follow, the city should make the Veranda Bay developer follow the new stormwater management rules because that will more greatly assure that Bulo Creek will not be degraded by adjoining residential development. And it's outstanding Florida water. It's historic. I don't need to go into all of that. The DOT said there's no data analysis on the traffic. The Department of Commerce also commented, and it addressed issues, infrastructure that would be needed. So for instance, there's no planning that we've seen, nothing that we've seen. How are they going to provide the services? How are they going to get? We know they say they got a wastewater plant, but what are they specifically going to do? And when are they going to do it? That's what those state agencies, not all of them, but that's what they were looking for, that kind of specificity. Now, that ties into a part of the annexation statute, which is that the city is supposed to provide a feasibility study that they are to furnish us. They have not furnished that study. The feasibility study would likely or should have addressed these kinds of issues. So there is a bit of a planning gap. Now, is it for us to tell them, "Look, you're not doing good planning"? You know, all we can do is provide our best advice. They are free to make their decision, and they have to live by the consequences of those decisions. I think what is upset, I'm not saying, I shouldn't use that word. In the various comments you've made to us over a period of time now, you've been concerned about the accountability of this project relative to good growth management principles. I think that's a good summary, like an umbrella over all of it. So if I were to pick out the things that are highlighted in my mind, you want to protect Bulo Creek. You don't want that compromised or risk the compromise of it. And I also sent you, by the way, again, you didn't have time to read it today. Chair Dance had mentioned to me, actually some time ago, that Hamed Tobiasin of our staff did an excellent summary of those new rules and what they would provide. And so I sent you that summary so you don't have to necessarily go through the whole regulatory structure that was enacted by the legislature. And I think you'll instantly see, oh, my gosh, if they do this, it will help protect Bulo Creek. But to this point in time, while we have been asking them to make that an express condition, just like you would in any development order, right? You must do A, B, and C. They have not done that yet. Will they do it? I don't know. But it's not in the paperwork. It's not in the plan today. Now, Mr. Moylan brought up another, a number of other issues having to do with how this development is going to unfold. How is the new road extension from Colbert Lane? How's that going to interface? And that is not completely to, hasn't been done in a way that meets what our comments have been. So the board has been concerned, as I said, about the growth management, infrastructure, the infrastructure issue of the roadway system. So I've said to some of you who have talked to me and been troubled by it, it is not for me to call any of the city commissioners and tell them, "Look, you ought to do this." That's not my role. That'd be very offensive if I did that. You all understand that, right? It'd be no different than a lawyer for one of the other governments telling you how you should do your land use. You're not going to hear them say that. But it is the dialogue among the public officials that will more likely do that than anything else. If you are concerned about these issues, you should talk to the individual city commissioners that you know or that you want to reach out to and express your views. And one of the, part of the growth management umbrella that I laid out there was, what about John Anderson? You know, the city wants to annex this area, but they don't want to take the portion of the road that's within that area and to manage it, which creates this very, let's say they don't. They're not required to. I had an inquiry by one of you. Can we compel them to do that? No, we can't compel them to do that. I would think that good government would lead them to do it. I realized that when it was first brought up, they didn't know a lot of the facts about, well, what would it involve? You know, we've never, you know, this is an important road. It's a scenic, designated scenic highway, by the way. So, you know, what did that involve? And I believe we gave them that information. I believe our administrative staff gave them that information. So let's say they don't. Okay, so now they, and they have this development. Well, if there are access, why are you all smiling at me? You want me to shut up?
I'm good. No.
We'll have to issue driveway permits, things that happen to the road. We're going to be involved in a regulatory fashion. It just doesn't make any sense. It makes no sense to govern that way. Plus, plus, if it was stayed with us, then we would have the responsibility to maintain that infrastructure, to keep up with the level of service, which would mean that we would have to spend capital dollars for improvements on that road. But they have not authorized the collection of transportation impact fees, which we could get in order to meet those challenges. So if they don't take it and they don't give the transportation impact fees, you know what they're doing? They're saying, "You keep maintaining the road, but we're not going to give you any money for it." And that's not right intergovernmentally. Not right.
So you weren't here when I brought this up. I wasn't here either, actually. I had done a one-way memo on the matter. And just, I did, so I wasn't, because I was not able to attend. But to Mr. Hadid's point, this was basically, in a nutshell, my statement because it's almost 9 o'clock at night. I don't believe it's good government to continue to create Swiss cheese, as they call it around here, where there are enclaves allowing, where enclaves are creating, allowing the annexation to continue without doing some sort of interlocal so that we get what we think is effective for that annexation or not granting it at all. To continue to allow Swiss cheese to occur, I think, is bad government.
Well, I want to just respond to that quickly. You know that Mr. Moylan addressed that in the memo. And we've raised it with him. And we said, "Look, it's not required to do that interlocal now, but we are expecting that we will do that interlocal, should you add it."
Yeah. And that's why I think we shouldn't take our foot off the gas on some of this because this is, you know, just because we didn't do it in the past doesn't mean we shouldn't start a precedent now or you will have no county left.
Point well taken. I heard you loud and clear, Mr. Hadid. I'm not going to take my foot off the pedal. I just see all kinds of problems with this, not just because I live there. It's not good for our county. I would like to see more happening in between the two governments. I will continue, I will report back. And then the last thing is, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and I will see you on the other side of New Year.
Do I get to talk now? Because I'm going to make it short and sweet. I promise. First, I want to say thank you so much to the Mr. Dixon and Ms. Albanese and the staff. We had the most beautiful float I've ever seen. Being on the two parades in one week is a miracle in itself. Having a 58-foot trailer driving through town center in Palm Coast is another miracle. We did not kill anybody. We tried to hit them, but we didn't do it. We got our own special access to leave. It was a phenomenal experience. I really appreciate it. Me being the young novice here, did you see I said "young"? Novice here. I'm thrilled to work with people like I'm surrounded by. As far as our attorney's department saving us $100,000, they're doing their due diligence. I want to thank you for that. That's huge. It doesn't sound like a lot of money when we keep adding zeros. $100,000 to me is a lot of money. And we'll continue to continue to look for more savings for all of us because it's all of our money as well. To the kind lady who was, I think, the last female to speak tonight with her beautiful daughter. I have to tell you, I have a problem with all the, what I call alphabet soup. I know as a public person, we really don't know what they're talking about half the time, and it's very confusing. And I apologize for that. Whenever I see something that feels like, "I don't know what I'm doing." I may sound stupid. I don't care. I'm there for you, to you to be able to absorb some of what you're hearing. It takes a while. So bear with my patience and my silly questions because I'm sure there's probably some people out there that have the same silly questions in their mind. They always say, "There's nothing such as a stupid question." So I'll ask what I need to ask. But I want to thank the people who stayed here tonight to absorb what's going on in our community. And thank you for coming and joining us and being here. That's really special for all of us. So with that, I'll say happy holidays, and I'll see you soon.
Turn my mic back on. All right, to our Ragga people that are still here, thank you for shutting down my email server and my IT guys for helping me get everything sorted out. It's, I got the message after like 50 of them. But it's, I haven't seen that kind of support. And really, to the people that added, not just forwarded the form letter, but added a paragraph, the gentleman from Ocala. And to be honest, I didn't reply to everybody. I couldn't. It was impossible. But, you know, the ones that wrote something special and added are the ones that I felt deserved the first chance at a reply. So, but good job. I do think, right, maybe we talk a little bit about the next steps. So there's a Thursday meeting. We don't know if FCT is going to be present or not, but they know of the meeting. Is that correct?
Correct. And whatever it's appropriate, I just wanted to kind of clear up some of the confusion from where we left off with this.
Okay. I'll leave you, I'll leave the last comments to you. And then we'll talk about the next steps for that. Did I hear correctly that Commissioner Darby passed away today?
It wasn't today. I had heard it was November 7th.
Okay. So I just heard about it today. And my condolences to his family. Oh, we'll get to that. Hold on. I thought it was about Commissioner Darby, so that's why. Let's see. Just a few things real quick about the special exception. I really want to have a workshop on the special exception process. Adam's like, "Oh, my God." But it's...
Bring the planning board.
Yeah. Sean and I have had exclusive, I mean, you know, detailed comments about how it can be made more thorough when appeals come to us because it's the whole deal about competent, substantial competent evidence that I think needs to be talked more about at the planning board level. But again, it can be done separately. And I really think that was it. So I will leave that. Again, Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you again for being here. I'll leave the final comments with you, Ms. Petito.
It might be a tag team between myself and the county attorney, but I just wanted to clarify. So back on August 19th, when we had the commission meeting, at the end of the meeting, I actually went back and listened to it. Commissioner Hanson actually had brought it up under Commissioner Comment about the idea of providing an opportunity for Ragga Surf to utilize River to Sea Preserve. And he was seeking consensus among the board for that authorization. he was seeking consensus among the board for that authorization. There was a discussion about the nonprofit status of RAGA Surf at the time. At that meeting, Jim Powell actually came forward and kind of explained his nonprofit status, as well as his for-profit businesses that support his nonprofit status. During that discussion, Commissioner Pennington suggested that maybe we look at a special permit or some sort of a special event as kind of a temporary stopgap till we could advertise this formally. At the time, Sean Moylan from the County Attorney's Office had suggested the temporary use agreement, seeking joint approval from the Town and Marine Land, since we both co-own the property. There was consensus provided from the board to move forward as outlined by Sean Moylan, and they, and the board had instructed staff to work on bringing back a formalized approval at the following month. I probably should have said something then, but when you think about a formalized approval, that would have meant that we have to develop either an RFP or an RSQ. That process alone is 10 weeks. Then, when you add in there that when we prepare our board agenda, we prepare it two weeks in advance so that we could get it out there, that would add another two weeks. So realistically, we couldn't have had anything come back to you for at least 12 weeks, because we would have had to have developed the proposal, we would have had to have advertised that, we would have had to have a committee rank them, evaluate them, and move forward with that, and then put it on the agenda. So from start to finish, it was, it would have been 12 weeks. When the decision was made, and this would probably be when I would have the attorneys weigh in, but the, the reason why we chose to go the route of a temporary use agreement was because that way it provides public property as a flexible, short-term solution for accommodating RAGA's activities without the need for a formal lease agreement. A temporary use agreement is typically offers limited but defined access to public property while also preserving Flagler County government's overarching control, ensuring that the space remains available for the public. In contrast, a formal lease agreement, which is what we would have secured through the RFP-RSQ process, would have created a long-term or exclusive right to that leased space. So it's more formalized, it would often grant the leaseholder a certain level of control or claim over the property that may extend beyond the term, the immediate term of his use, and then that claim could limit the property's availability for the public or for future needs. So that's why the determination was made to go with the temporary, because it's not binding, it doesn't take ownership or claim over the property. And during that process, it was, you know, it is something within my purview that didn't need to come back to the board. The formal process, which is something that we were working towards, because we actually started meeting, you know, probably, I'm looking at the timeline that I had created, I sent an email to staff about, you know, let's start working, meeting together, and come up with the RSQ language. And so that, that actually started in August. We had meetings again in September. There was a slight delay because we met again in November, but there was a slight delay in progress because our, and I'm not trying to make excuses, but we were dealing with a hurricane in between that we were in the middle of. And then there were some also engineering projects of a higher priority that took precedent over staff working on this item. So there was a delay, but we were working on it from the time that we moved forward with that temporary use to, to come up with the language. Once we were notified, we've kind of, you know, kind of killed that right now and have it on hold because of the, the notification that we received from FCT or DEP. But I do want to clarify that when that, that notification came out, they did not include anybody in county administration. A lot of the correspondents went to the Town and Marine Land exclusively. It didn't even include county staff, whether it be elected or employees at this level. So there was a delay in that. I don't know why that was. I don't know why they didn't send it to us. I did get information forwarded to me, but I didn't actually receive the letter that was sent. I didn't get it until December 2nd, and it actually came out, I think it was November 16th. And so, you know, I did respond, and we did everything in our power to address the concerns, you know, and I don't want to, you know, keep harping on the same thing, but the two issues that we have of noncompliance is the removal of the concrete pads and the, what they thought was a lease agreement, which is that formalized thing, which is what they want to weigh in on. This is a temporary use agreement, it's, it's completely different. We tried explaining that to them over the phone, which is why I think maybe when we have a conversation face-to-face, which is something we've been pushing for, maybe we will have some, you know, some luck with that. But I'll probably refer anything more legal about that process to the county attorney. We are hoping on Thursday that they are in attendance. We were led to believe that at minimum, they might be calling in on the 19th at 6:00 for that meeting with the Town and Marine Land. From county staff, I know we've got, both attorneys will be in attendance, myself, Jorge, Mike Dixon, Eric Revolta, our land management. So you'll have six people from the county that'll be in attendance at that meeting, along with whoever is there for the town. So I just wanted to provide that overview, so you can kind of see the context. It's not just, you know, as easy as just, you know, we dropped the ball and what happened. So I just wanted to explain that, so.
All right. Very good.
Let me just, can I just supplement?
Absolutely.
The, Mr. Moylan found the pathway to grant the immediate, to relieve the situation to the temporary use agreement. I don't know how many of you read it. It was very specific in detail about what was encompassed by that. I mean, it's temporary nature, yes, but also it, that it had to be consistent with the management plan. It wasn't a situation where, oh, we forgot about the management plan, it is in there. So we have to go through a process. You can't snap your fingers and it happens. So we had to do the RSQ. Ms. Petito referred to, I think, working on it in September, whatever. I work very closely with finance, I'm sure you know that. So they were trying to figure out, how are we going to do this RSQ? What, how are we going to shape this? This is a very unusual solicitation. So I was in, we were doing emails back and forth, I sat down with John, John Brower and Robert Grounds, two major sessions in John's office about how we were going to work our way through. And this was on an expedited basis, because we knew it had to be done quickly. Then the hurricane hit, and that threw the momentum off. It threw the momentum off. So when we came back from that, well, guess what? We started getting the information about matters that were affecting the River to Sea. Of course, you know, there was, there were things that went on, obviously, through the hurricane. But then we got a, like a list of things, and I don't remember exactly who it came from or how it came, and we had to pin it down. They said, "There's, there's sewage being pumped into the river. There's, there's sand being placed into gopher tortoise holes. There's a sand operation going on on the property." And then I think they mentioned the RAGA Surf. There are, I'm trying to think if there are any other things. So I went to solve, what are these things that are going on? I spent a whole day at Marine Land surveilling these things, talking with people, and finding out the facts so that we could communicate back to FCT. Here is what is going on. Track down the company that was out there. They were redoing the, the spray field area, which involved a lot of sand, you know, spray field area is where wastewater is absorbed, and so that sand, I guess, got really saturated, I'm guessing now, got very saturated from Milton, and so they had to take that sand out because it wasn't functioning. So the wastewater contaminant stuff was getting to the river when it shouldn't have. So that was being addressed. Then we learned there was an emergency pump from FEMA on this, this is the north end of the property. On the south end of the property, there was an emergency pumping operation that was going on 24 hours a day for, I don't even know how long, because that neighborhood got flooded, and the only way they could get it out of there was to run up a hose with a big, with a couple of big pumps that, that ran that out there. So that property was really affected by, by the storm. So we're grappling with all those issues, putting the stuff together, and then we find out about the issues in a more formal way. But they were not, they were not talking to us, they were not meeting with us. It was like emails that were coming, and we would respond back, and we weren't getting anywhere. We tried to set up conversations, they didn't happen. It was a situation where it was overtaken by events. If we had been able to do it in an orderly fashion, we would have had an RFP or RSQ process, which we could advise FCT, this is what we're doing, and have an orderly timeline as to how we were going to do it. We just never had that opportunity. The opportunity never presented itself. There was never any intention, ever, to dishonor the management plan. It's reflected in our documents, all our communications to them, all our communications to the public and to third parties. So it's just, I call it, it was all overtaken by events. Mishaps.
So knowing that you knew about the management plan, I think this board knowing would have helped to make a better decision that day, that there was one that needed permission. And then two, you know, I think consensus was made because we thought we'd be seeing it again in a, within a month or so. So just lots of lessons out of that whole thing, and I know I will not be doing anything, you know, that comes, pops up like that, that wasn't on the agenda that I couldn't research in the future. So that's my takeaway from it.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Have a good night, everybody. Drive safe home, please.